Good morning, everyone. Today is July 15, 2020, and it is 10:03 a.m. I'm Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Select Budget Committee for the Seattle City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Lewis? Lewis?
Present. I forgot that. Present.
Okay, thank you. Morales?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sawant?
Here.
Strauss?
Present.
Council President Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Mosqueta? Chair Mosqueta? Seven present.
My apologies, I'm here. This is Lisa Herbold.
Okay, eight present.
Colleagues, it appears that we have lost our chair. So... Tech folks, can you give me a sense of where we're at with getting Councilmember Mosqueta back on the line?
I just noticed that too about two seconds ago. I did...
There, looks like she's logging, looks like she's logging back in, so...
Okay.
Thanks so much, Eric. Appreciate it. So, for folks hanging on, we're just going to give Councilmember Mosqueta an opportunity to get oriented again, and I will filibuster in the meantime. Your audio is not working. Apologies to folks watching us. We're just having a little bit of a technology challenge at the moment. So appreciate everybody's patience, including those folks who are waiting to give public comment this morning. Sorry for the slight delay here. Looks like she's still having some issues with the technology. Unfortunately, I don't have the chair's script, so I'm going to suggest that we go into recess for just a quick moment. If we can stop the recording and just go into recess for about five minutes to address some of the technology issues, that'd be greatly appreciated. I see that Seattle Channel is no longer recording. I appreciate that. So colleagues, let's just stand by a little bit longer to give Chair Mosqueta an opportunity to troubleshoot her technology.
Colleagues, I apologize for that. I want to thank Council President for going into recess. Madam Clerk, how many more minutes until our recess is over?
It's five minutes. The lotus have expired.
All right. Before we get started, let me make sure that I sound fine. Okay. Well, good morning again, everyone. Sorry for the interruption. We are resuming our Select Budget Committee again. Today is July 15, 2020. The Clerk has read the roll. Madam Clerk, will you please, again, identify how many council members we have here present with us?
Eight present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody who's joined us late that didn't get a chance to say "present"? Because I am present now. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, council colleagues, it is our intent to have public comment at the beginning of every Select Budget Committee, and there is a lot of people signed up for today's public comment. The first item on our agenda is public comment, so I'm going to get right into that. We will open public comment for the period of at least 45 minutes. Given the delay, I may add additional time. The public comment period will be given 45 seconds for each person to speak. I will call three speakers at a time in the order in which they are registered on the list today, giving preference to Seattle residents, and then if time permits, going to the remaining speakers. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can still sign up for public comment. Once I call the speaker's name, the staff will unmute you and a microphone will promptly tell you that you've been unmuted. That's your cue to begin speaking. Please start with your name and tell us what topic you're here to address. You will hear a 10-second chimer when your allotted time is about to conclude so that you get a chance to wrap up your comments. When you're done speaking, please do hang up and connect again to watch the rest of the meeting through the Listen In Line or Seattle Channel. All of these options are listed on our agenda for today. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first three speakers who are present on the list. Apologies for the delays, folks. Here we go. Maya Garfinkel, Sarah Bender, and Aaron Mendel. Welcome, and thank you for waiting. Maya, please begin.
My name is Maya Garfinkel, and I'm a tenant organizer with B Seattle, and I grew up in B5. By demanding the city defunds the SPD in investment communities, activists are fighting for people of color to live, thrive, and stay in Seattle. We, as a city, are not in this housing and gentrification crisis by accident. Centuries of racist housing discrimination and exclusion in Seattle, including the Native and Chinese Exclusion Acts and the 1923 zoning laws, which formulated the residential zoning codes many continue to fight to preserve, were developed expressly to exclude Black people from Seattle neighborhoods and have brought us a catastrophic housing shortage. Activists leading this fight live and know the legacies of this housing history and are calling on their elected officials to give them the resources they need to theorize and implement the solution: defund SPD.
Thank you. Sarah Bender, welcome.
My name is Sarah Bender. I'm a community member. Cutting SPD by 50% will result in less than 700 officers on the street across three shifts, 365 days per year, which is hardly enough to serve the needs of over 730,000 community members, even with other systems in place. What is your plan if some major crisis occurs? Are you prepared to be held accountable for a lack of emergency response? While some of the department's funding can certainly be redirected to other community supports dedicated to prevent crime, this should be done over time and with intention. Please consider reviewing the department's proposed budget at 20%, cut 30%, etc. Please slow down, be intentional, and involve more people at the table, including representatives of SPD, so that we can collaborate to come up with an intentional action to care for Seattle's community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Aaron Mendel, welcome.
Hi, my name is Aaron Mandel. I'm a lifelong resident of District 6. I'm attending today's City Council Budget Hearing in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions because it is well past time we actually invest in real solutions that keep us safe and not in a failed racist militarized police department. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge council members to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment of those funds to replace current 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system, scale up community-led solutions, fund a community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. Please support defunding SPD and community reinvestment now, and don't let...
Thank you, Aaron. The next three speakers are Lucas Vargas, Robert Kraschenek, and Mike Sloan. Welcome, Lucas. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Lucas, an organizer with 350 Seattle. The Jump Start Spend Plan, shaped by the amendment Councilmember Mosqueta is bringing forward today, is a down payment on a just recovery for communities struggling against the COVID-19 pandemic and Seattle's Green New Deal. We are proud to have worked with partners in labor, affordable housing advocates, environmental justice leaders, and Councilmember Mosqueta's office to put forward this proposal after extensive community consultation. This plan will create local clean energy jobs that will help make good on the council's commitment to eliminate climate pollution in Seattle. It ensures communities already most impacted by the climate crisis and economic injustice are served first. It prioritizes job training and retraining for workers impacted by COVID-19 and the transition away from fossil fuels. In the same spirit, we support defunding the SPD by over 50% and reinvesting the funds in Black and Brown communities.
Thank you, Lucas. Robert, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Robert Kropchank. I'm a homeowner in Greenwood in District 6. 10 years ago, I worked in the mayor's office when a consent decree was negotiated. It was better than nothing, but clearly insufficient. Police officers shot and killed Charlene Lyles during the consent decree. Her murder was ruled justified during the consent decree. Two weeks ago, Seattle police brutalized a reporter and protesters because an international incident. The mayor has had no public response to this. The stories that reporter told were harrowing. They're the stuff of authoritarian regimes, and they happened here in Seattle just two weeks ago. This shows the urgent need to act now. Slowing down means more death and suffering. The community demands we defund SPD. Yesterday, the Decriminalize Seattle movement held a teach-in, going into clear detail about how we can do it. You've had detailed discussions about it. I urge you to reject the mayor's lies, step up, and defund SPD's budget by 50%. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Sloan?
Hey, this is Mike Sloan, president of the Seattle Police Officers Guild. I appreciate the council's time today as I address the reckless movement to defund SPD. I cite 2016-led study on behalf of then-Mayor Murray, citing that the department needs more officers due to the robust economy and the population growth in the city of Seattle. Six weeks ago, President Gonzalez is on record applauding the work of the men and women of the Seattle Police Officers Guild conducting the reform work leading on training and de-escalation. This defund movement is reckless, does not purport nor represent the ignored majority of the citizens of the city.
You still have time.
I urge everybody to not back this position.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sloan. Olivia Smith, followed by Jessica Scalzo and Jaslyn Huerta. Welcome, Olivia.
Olivia Smith, with Youth on Doing Institutional Racism. Our language has been co-opted, so I'm going to talk about institutionalized white supremacy. Same thing, systems, institutions, working together to give white people best possible outcomes. Birkin family history. Her grandparents, Italian Catholic colonizers assimilated into whiteness. Both her father and grandfather were in state legislature. Nearly all seven of her siblings are high up in government, law, and media. I think JD knows full well that the systems killing our people are the same systems helping her people thrive and gain more power. That's institutionalized white supremacy. With the economy the way it is and climate change, I think there are a lot more crises coming. Mayor Karen and these stay-at-home moms running police support groups need to take a seat. We ain't got no time for their games. Defund the police by 50%, period. Peace.
Next, we have Jessica. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Hello, council. My name is Jessica Scalzo, and I live in District 3. I am calling in support of defunding the police by 50% because, in my eyes, the police are here to protect the wealthy and property owners and do a lot more harm to all the rest of us. I urge the council members to support the four-point plan put forward by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, which is replacing 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system, scaling up community-led solutions, funding a community-created roadmap to life without policing, and investing in housing for all. And on the last point, use the Amazon tax to build the first 1,000 homes for specifically Black families in the Central District.
Thank you. Jaslyn Huerta, welcome.
Hello, I'm Jaslyn Huerta. I live in District 3 on Capitol Hill, and I'm calling to request that you decrease the SPD budget by at least 50% and reinvest that money into community-led solutions. I'm excited and honestly, for the first time in a while, I feel hopeful because of Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan. Councilmember Juarez, I know you said we need a plan, not a percentage, and like you, in their well-funded strategy, we get both. So we have an opportunity to make real systemic change, and I'm hoping that you, our representatives, hear the call and answer. We ask too much of our police force, and it's clear that it's not working. Let's demilitarize the SPD and reinvest that into community-led solutions. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I yield my time.
Thank you. The next three people are Garrett Blingsman? Sorry. Megan Murphy and Ashley Douglas. Garrett, welcome, and apologies for the mispronunciation on your last name.
That's okay. My name's Garrett Blasingame, resident. I'm attending today's City Council Budget Hearing in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions because the system is bloated and not currently serving the people. The council, in part from leadership by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, has laid out plans for how to accomplish these goals clearly, despite any claims by our current mayor, and should proceed. Jenny Durkin's negotiation from the other day is simply not enough. Also, Alex Peterson, please listen to and respond to your constituents. I know your inbox has been flooded with calls for 50% defunding. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. The next three people are Ashley Douglas, Jacob Linwall, and Ab Janner. Ashley, welcome.
Ashley Douglas? Hello, thank you. My name is Ashley Douglas. I support defunding SPD by 50%, and I, like other callers, urge you to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment. I previously lived in the Central District and recently moved to Capitol Hill. When cops murdered Charlene Lyles in her home, it was not an isolated incident. It was a tragic example of the racist standard in the department. When white folks started listening to their Black peers and protesting in support... Anyway, SPD must be demilitarized and be held accountable for literal war crimes as a first step toward regaining public trust. Defund police and invest in Black and Brown communities now. Thanks for bearing with me if I misunderstood.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Lots of...
Yeah, please go ahead. Thank you for bearing with us. I know that it's a lot to get in in a short amount of time. Again, a reminder, when you hear that chime, you'll have about 10 seconds to wrap up with a slight grace period at the end to finish any remaining comments, but thanks for calling in today. We appreciate it. And if you don't get your chance to say all of your words, please do email us at council@seattle.gov. Jacob, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jacob Williamwall. I live in District 5, and I would like to thank most of the City Council for voting to defund the SPD by at least 50% and follow Decriminalize Seattle's four-point plan. I think it's extremely telling that the mayor, my own representative Deborah Juarez, and the pro-police advocates who are just showing up today, welcome, guys, only became interested in analysis after it became clear that they could not end the conversation by simply using violence. The pro-cops side had their chance to negotiate, and they chose instead to gas-shoot and beat peaceful demonstrators. There is a plan, and we need to implement it now over these obvious bad-faith objections. 50% is a good start. Now is already too late for some of us. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Ab, welcome.
My name is Ab... My name is Ab Buenaire with Puget Sound Sage and South Gore, speaking on the Jump Start Spend Plan. COVID-19 further exposed our society's structural inequities, evident in how BIPOC communities are extremely impacted by this crisis. The fractures in our economy came out of centuries of extracting resources and creating wealth from BIPOC land and labor. We need bold, community-driven solutions for a future rooted in racial equity and community self-determination. Equitable Development Initiative and the Green New Deal are racial justice, values-driven policies that BIPOC communities fought for. We urge the council to pass a Jump Start Spend Plan with 10% for EDI and 10% for Green New Deal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patience Malaba, followed by Eric P., and then Isaac Boyance. Patience, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patience Malaba with the Housing Development Consortium. I want to start by thanking you, council, for passing Jump Start Seattle. As you deliberate on the spend plan today, I urge you to protect the capital and O&M allocation of the spend plan. Please use this new progressive revenue to invest deeply in the production and operation of housing, housing that is permanently affordable and environmentally sustainable. I urge you to avert short-term fixes that will not increase long-term supply of affordable housing. Thank you.
Eric, welcome.
The City Council has offered no... Hello?
Hi, Eric. We restarted your time. Please go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. The City Council has offered no viable solutions to the public safety risks and unintended consequences of their reckless actions. Over 10,000 crisis calls annually, SPD has a 1.6 use-of-force rate and an arrest rate of under 10%. All Seattle police officers have 40 hours of training and de-escalation and crisis intervention over the last five years, and 73% of patrol officers are 40-hour CIT certified. SPD has five full-time officers and five full-time mental health professionals, and SPD is continually recognized as a national leader in de-escalation and interactions with persons in crisis. The City Council has steadily turned this once Emerald City into a dystopian nightmare. Keep our communities safe, and do not defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Isaac Boyance?
Hi, my name's Isaac Boyance. I'm attending today's Seattle Council Budget Hearing in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions. I'm doing this because I'm afraid of the police and have been for most of my 28 years. I've seen the police pull up in unmarked vans and 15 officers pull guns on my stepfather because he looked like somebody that they were after. I've seen SWAT team kill my cousin while his child was in his arms. The police don't protect my community, they terrorize it. This can only be fixed by abolition, or at a minimum, defunding the police. Let Seattle be an example for when it's possible. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Boyance. The next three speakers are Reverend Jeffrey Erica Logan and Jabari Ade. Reverend Jeffrey, welcome.
My name is Robert L. Jeffrey. I'm a pastor of Blue Hope Missionary Baptist Church. In 1961, Seattle initiated a racist initiative to remove African-Americans from the Central Area. Today is time to undo that initiative, and I'm calling in favor of the 1,000 affordable housing units to be built in the Central Area. We have an opportunity to do the right thing, and we should use this opportunity. In addition, I'm calling in to support the Defund the Police initiative. So I think that now is the time for us to do the right thing in Seattle.
Thank you very much, Reverend Jeffrey. Erica Logan, welcome. Erica Gallardo Logan, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Erica Logan, resident of City Council District 3. As an economist by training, a family member to police officers, and a person of color, I strongly support divestment from the Seattle Police Department, also called defunding SPD. In a thoughtful way, the unfortunate truth is more training and diversity among police officers, while intrinsically valuable, will not work to an inappropriate use of force. The most studied and supported method to help our communities is to assign more appropriate professionals, such as licensed social workers, community medical professionals, et cetera, to respond to specific types of emergencies. It should not be a surprise that that shift in responsibility also necessitates a shift in funding. We are all on the same team. Thank you for listening. I strongly support defunding the police.
Thank you very much. Erica Jabari, welcome.
Could you repeat the...
Mr. Ade? It's J-A-B-A-R-I-A-D-D-A-E. And my apologies for my pronunciation. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jabari Ade. I'm a lifelong Seattle resident, person of color, and son of a convicted felon. I, however, have committed myself to attempting to ensure that our community is safe. I have pride that our police department treats our community with dignity and respect. Please do not cut Seattle Police's budget by 50%. Doing so will plunge our city into chaos. Do not throw away everything that our city has worked for. Thank you.
Thank you, and apologies for the name, mispronunciation on my part. Ethan Monas, Sarah Scott, and Victoria Woods Arsky. So sorry, everyone. Ethan, welcome.
Was that me, Ethan Manns?
Yes, thank you, Ethan.
Yeah, so I'm calling in support of defunding SPD by 50% at least and reinvesting in community-led solutions because investment in community is what keeps communities safe. When we talk about neighborhoods that are popularly regarded as safe, what do we see? It's not more police officers roaming the streets like in my neighborhood. It's high rates of homeownership. It's good schools. It's access to healthy food. It's strong community relationships. These Black communities exist in a state where the city refuses to invest in solutions that support the people that actually live there, instead opting only to support projects that only support gentrification, all while sending legions of armed officers, who remember mostly don't even live in our city, but are funded with our tax dollars to come in here with guns and keep their knees on our neck. I support King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle's four-point plan for community reinvestment and defunding the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Scott, welcome.
Hi there. Thank... Hi there, council. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me. I am completely against defunding the police. Seattle police officers are human beings. They are mothers, fathers, husbands, wives, sisters, brothers, sons, and daughters who took an oath to serve the citizens of the city of Seattle. They have served selflessly during the COVID-19 global pandemic, coming to work on the front lines, while so many, including the City Council, were able to work from home and stay safe. They worked the front lines during protests while taking bottles, rocks, cement, bricks, explosive devices, frozen water bottles, and other items pelted at them. They listened to protestors scream comments like, "Take your gun, put it under your chin, and pull the trigger," while council members stood by unfazed by these peaceful protestors' comments. They come to work every day while elected officials play politics with their careers. Please do not fund SPD.
The next person is Victoria. Welcome.
Hi. Yes, Victoria. Hi, thank you. This is Victoria Woods Arsky. I'm a 20-year resident of the city. The city's charter has three pillars centering around the protection, health, and safety of its citizens. An arbitrary 50% SPD budget reduction fails all three and negatively impacts every resident by reducing staff numbers and response times. What thorough educated research was done to make these cuts? How does this address the issues of policing policy and standards reform, judicial reform, providing services and programs that advance the viability for underserved communities, and create pathways for positive change? This is a knee-jerk reaction and not... This is a knee-jerk reaction and not thoughtful, educated policy. I have traveled the world, but only in my hometown have I been the victim of a violent crime upon my person. The city is not safe, and this does not make it safer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Jesse Willard, Christine Bloom, and Reverend Angela Yang. Jesse, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jesse Willard, and I am calling as a Seattle resident to support this proposed defunding of SPD. I would like to thank city council for taking real action here and say that I think that redirecting funding away from policing toward agencies better equipped to handle the problems we face as a city is a vital part of making this a more just, safer, healthier place for all Seattleites, especially Black, Indigenous, and other Seattleites of color. It's something that so many of us have known was necessary for so long, and I want to thank council and especially the people in the streets for making what seemed impossible very possible, maybe even inevitable. As a political scientist and a comparativist, I can say with confidence that we know there are better ways. And I'll add that one thing that many protesters and many police agree on is that police in this society are asked to do too much. So let's take this opportunity to rethink who the best responders are across the board and fund better options instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, welcome.
Hi, Christine Bloom, resident of the city, speaking about Do Not Defund SPD. The Seattle Police Department has completed 10 of 10 assessments with the settlement agreement and consent decree. The city has wondered on releasing SPD from federal sites, defunding the police department could jeopardize all the progress that has been made. Good training, good hours put in for these officers. The settlement agreement and consent decree specifies training, supervisory, less wasteful tools, and oversight as primary focus while under federal oversight. Defunding of the... ...deparages EDPs as well as compliance with the formal agreement. Thank you for your time. Do not defund SPD.
Thank you very much. Reverend Angela Yang, welcome.
Thank you. I am the Reverend Angela Yang, Senior Pastor Bethany United Church of Christ. I stand with over 220 clergy and numerous community leaders, many waiting to speak today, to urge the council to invest $50 million per year to fund 1,000 new affordable homes in the CD. Include it in your spending plan resolution of $240 million, $214 million, and begin to reverse gentrification and displacement of thousands of our Black families. We call on you, the council, to be bold and to prioritize Black lives by investing the proposed $50 million per year, thanks to council members so want, to fund and build 1,000 new affordable homes in the CD for our Black families to return, live, and thrive. Defund the SPD, for in doing so, we will do justice for all. In this time, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people to speak are Day Tabert, Logan Bowers, and Carrie Grant. Just double-checking, do we have Mr. Tabert with us or Ms. Tabert?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I didn't... Okay.
My apologies.
District 6.
We're going to restart your time here. Thank you for being with us today, Day.
Sure. Okay. Day Tabert, District 6. I want to thank the council first for listening to the constituents and pledging to the cause of defunding SPD by at least 50%. I recommend the council follows through with those plans and the ones sponsored by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. Police all over the country are being exposed en masse for clearly not operating in the interest of the people and are heavily militarized and overprotected by their unions and their budgets. SPD are some of the most overpaid cops in the country to do what? Sweep homeless people during a pandemic? And don't be fooled by the rhetoric of Dirk and Best, who have demonstrably lied to news networks and public about protesters for nearly seven weeks now. These cuts were not decided arbitrarily, nor are they blunt. We have an enormous budget shortfall, and we can make justice for Sean First, Charlene Alyles, and John T. Williams in the same moment. I yield my time.
Thank you. Logan, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueda. I'm Logan Bowers, a renter in District 3. I'm commenting on today's amendment to concentrate 1,000 homes in the Central District. Honestly, I'm surprised the council in 2020 is entertaining such a racist policy. By concentrating housing and therefore concentrating BIPOC folks in the CD, you're necessarily making all other Seattle neighborhoods even whiter than they already are. You reinforce decades of racism and redlining that forced BIPOC folks into the CD in the first place. You should instead be prioritizing affordable housing in Windermere, or Blue Ridge, or Madison Park, or any other of the many neighborhoods in Seattle whose founding principle was no Black people allowed. I don't want to live in a segregated city, and good God is this policy segregationist. What are you guys thinking? Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Carrie, welcome.
Hi, I'm Carrie Grant. I live in West Seattle, and I've lived in Seattle all my life. I am calling to support defunding SPD. The goal here is to have our communities be safer and more functional. I volunteer in an experimental city that has solid mental health, law enforcement, fire, and troubleshooting mediation branches. They all work well together. The mediation branch is the first responder, and we can call in law enforcement if they are needed. Most of the time, they're not. It works in Black Rock City. It works in Eugene, Oregon, with a program called Kahoots. It can work in Seattle. The mayor and the chief of police have shown that they are not in control of the police who are a danger to our city. Please defund SPD. It's the...
Thank you. Kevin, welcome. We'll have Kevin Witzwang, Peyton Loughlin, and Derek Bonifelia. Kevin, welcome.
Hi, big thanks to the council members who have publicly committed to defunding by at least 50%. I'm from District 6, and I want to thank Dan Strauss for walking them off. I urge the whole council to follow the Four Point Plan from Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. We can strengthen communities of color, fund affordable housing, and find more effective alternatives in armed police responses. Study after study shows that more cops and more patrols do not prevent crime, so please resist the mayor and police attempts to mischaracterize and belittle this process and the unity of the movement behind it. Finally, do not let your colleagues use proximity to this process, subvert it with last-minute weakening amendments. Stay strong and defund SPD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome Peyton.
Hi, my name is Peyton Loughlin, and I'm a Seattle resident living in District 7. I support defunding the SPD by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions, because SPD has proven time and time again that they cannot safely and responsibly carry out their duty to protect our community. Police do not prevent crime, they respond to it, when and however they see fit. They murder BIPOC and stand by as allies and protesters are also murdered. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge council members to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's Four Point Plan. And yes, there is a plan created by experts for community reinvestment of those funds to replace current 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system. I also support the use of funds to build homes in the Central District. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, welcome.
Hi, my name is Derek Bonifelia, and I'm a resident of District 6, a member of Sunrise Movement Seattle. I'm attending today's budget hearing in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions by adopting the Four Point Plan presented by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. We need transformational change away from SPD's violence, racism, and punishment to a system based on community, care, and equity. I want to emphasize the reinvestment in community-led solutions, because the best solutions come from impacted communities, not from government panels or consultants or detached millionaires like our mayor. To the council members who have already committed, be assured that we are all still paying attention and that those of us who have taken to the streets will not be slowing down until all these demands are actually enacted, not just agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Karts, followed by Daniel Maranogi. And Ryan, you've got Nick. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Nick Kardus, and I'm here to speak about the budget for the Seattle Police Department. First point is, the Seattle City Charter specifies that the city must maintain adequate police coverage in each of the districts of the city. How does defunding SPD by 50% and leaving over 700 police officers meet the specifications of the charter? And the charter states, and I quote, "The police department shall consist of the chief of police and as many subordinate officers and employees as may by ordinance be prescribed. There shall be maintained adequate police protection in each district of the city," end quote. My next point regarding training, some proposed budget cuts would deeply impact the training that few remaining officers receive, thus having adverse impact on the quality of services officers provide. This is the complete opposite of what community members have been demanding from SPD. Everyone should agree that officers should properly imbue...
Thank you, Nick. Sorry you were cut off. Please send the rest of your comments in. Danielle, welcome.
Hi, my name is Dani Maranogony Simonsen, and I'm a community member from District 7 and District 6. I'm calling in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions, because SPD does not make me feel safe and protected and have existed without proper authority or governance for far too long. These funds are better appropriated to Black and Indigenous communities that have had their funds and land taken from them by the Seattle community for years. In addition to defunding Seattle PD by 50%, I urge council members to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's Four Point Plan for community reinvestment of those funds... Um, sorry. And to replace current 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system. And I also want to urge city council to support Councilmember Grameh Zahili in transferring vacant Southland land on MLK Way from song transit to Blackwood organization.
Thank you very much. Ryan Yuka.
Hi, my name is Ryan Yuka, and I live in Seattle's 3rd District and am a member of the UAW 4121. I'm calling to urge the council members to allocate $50 million per year from the new Big Business Tax to fund affordable housing in the Central District to begin the process of reversing gentrification in this historically Black neighborhood. As you've seen this summer through the massive and continued Black Lives Matter protests in Seattle, citizens of Seattle want real action to help Black communities. $17 million is simply not enough to aid the communities that have been hit the hardest by the unprecedented gentrification that has been ongoing in Seattle for over a decade due to unchecked big businesses like Amazon. I urge the council members to follow through with defunding the police by at least 50% and reinvesting that money into communities of color and to use $50 million of revenue from new Big Business Tax to fund permanently affordable housing in the Central District. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people will be Dustin Lambrou, Bridget Harmon, and Patricia Allen. Dustin, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Mosqueda. I'm here with my colleague Nicole Grant, Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Labor Council, and we're going to testify together. Nicole?
Thanks, council members. MLK Labor and King County and Seattle's Labor Movement stand united in our support of the Jump Start Program. I wanted to take a moment to especially elevate the Green New Deal work inside of Jump Start. It's important that we get our homes off of fossil fuel and as well mention that we support the economic revitalization allocation that support getting workers out of the fossil fuel industry. Thank you all so much for your leadership on this and all your work. We see your time.
We'll spend your time if you, since you're a group. You still have a few more seconds, Dustin, if you have any other follow-up comments. Okay. Thank you for your time, folks from MLK Labor. Bridget, welcome.
Hold on a second here.
Apologies.
Did you repeat the name again, council member?
Bridget Harmon. Oh, it sounds like Bridget's not available. Thank you. I teach for flagging that. And then the next person that we had was Patricia Allen.
Hi, my name is Patricia Allen. I'm a citizen of the Klinkin Haida Nation of Southeast Alaska and from a third-generation family in the historically redlined Black Central District communities. On behalf of the National Coalition to End Urban Indigenous Homelessness and Chief Seattle Club, as the coalition leaves on, I would like to encourage the ending of the Seattle Police Department's $2.6 million in the Navigation Team budget. In this historical pandemic, heavily impacting unsheltered Indigenous Native communities as well as recent discoveries of the 5% increase of Native homelessness in the year 2020, several leading Native direct service organizations have proven that our low homelessness relapse rates that community-led, culturally responsible, and trauma-informed policies positively address long-term solutions that end homelessness. We also, as Chief Seattle Club, endorse Decriminalize Seattle. Thank you. And you...
Thank you so much. Niacha Sajju, Devin Ku, and Mahal Johnson. Niacha, welcome.
Hello, my name is Niacha Sajju. I'm attending today's City Council Budget Hearings in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions, because I've lived in Seattle in the Central District my whole life. I work with young people, and police don't keep them safe or me safe. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge council members to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's Four Point Plan for community reinvestment of those funds to replace current 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system, scale up community-led solutions, fund the community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. Please support defunding SPD and community reinvestment now.
Thank you. Devin, welcome.
This is Devin Ku. I live in... Hi, my name is Devin Ku, and I live in District 2, and I'm a local high school teacher. I've heard council members here publicly support the Four Point Plan to Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, but this budget readjustment is the moment where you must show you are serious about this. Need to reimagine what emergency response is. Police are not the only way to keep our community safe. In fact, they do not keep our community safe at all. We need to address causes, not symptoms. We need to reinvest in our communities. You need to shift funds to replace the current 911 operations with civilian-controlled systems, scale up community-led solutions, fund the community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. Please support defunding SPD and community reinvestment now. If the council does not make these changes, we will know you are not serious at all. Please take action.
The next person is Mahal. Welcome.
Hello, as a resident and worker in District 2 and the daughter of a 29-year veteran of Seattle Police, I do not believe in defunding the department. SPD is the most progressive police department in the nation. In recent years, SPD has made an effort to recruit from the community it serves. In 2019, 39% of the officers that were hired were people of color. If the SPD budget is cut by 50%, all of those officers would be the first to go, as the city, as well as the labor contract both specify that layoffs are based upon reverse seniorities. SPD is touted as a national leader in reform, de-escalation, and training. Former President Obama, federal monitor Merrick Bob, and Department of Justice, and even council member Lorena Gonzalez have quoted the marked progress of the city and SPD has made since 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Richard Vogt, Maya Lara, and Jesse Hagobian.
Welcome, Richard.
I'm Richard Vogt, living in District 4. Climate change will not stop devastating marginalized communities while waiting for everyone to be vaccinated for COVID-19. Please ensure adequate funding in the 2020 and 2021 budgets to fully staff the planning and other pre-implementation activities to assure timely implementation and evaluation of greenhouse gas emission reduction. Waiting will only cost more money that we currently do not have. I yield my time.
Thank you for your time today. Maya, welcome.
Seattle's plan for defunding the police... Hi, my name is Myra Latta, and I live in Greenwood, District 6. I fully support Decrim Seattle's plan for defunding the police by 50% and redirecting those funds to community programs which have shown to do more for public health and safety than cops. We're in a new reality, one with obscene wealth inequality, unemployment, unrest, with possibly sliding back a phase with mass evictions coming soon, all which will be disproportionately suffered by Black and Brown people. Do we really need $400 million for a racist police department unequipped to deal with poverty, mental illness, and trauma when we only put forward $20 million to the Equitable Development Initiative, the future we say we want that continues to systematically starve? Let's not repeat 2008, that's what's reckless. Let's instead trust communities who fight for change versus the community afraid of it. We know who have the most...
Thank you. The next three are... Oh, sorry. Jesse, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jesse Hagobian. I'm Seattle-born and raised, and I teach at my alma mater, Garfield High School. And in early June, I put forward a resolution to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's call to defund the police by 50% and reinvest in our communities. And that resolution passed amongst Seattle educated... And that resolution passed amongst Seattle educators and the Seattle Education Association Union overwhelmingly, some 80% or more. Why did your child's teacher vote to defund the police? One, because they harass and have assaulted our students that we teach every day. They've assaulted us and they killed Seattle Public Schools' mother, Charlena Lyles. So we want to redefine public safety to mean a home for all our homeless students COVID type.
Thank you, Jesse. Please send the rest of your comments as well. Appreciate it. Jason Plourde, Starr Jeffrey, and Madeline Coily are the next three speakers. Jason, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jason Ford and I'm the project manager for the AMP AIDS Memorial Pathway, which is what I'm speaking about today. I've been able to present to the council before on this important project and I appreciate the support we've received from council members. AIDS Memorial Pathway will be a permanent place of reflection and remembrance in Seattle that will tell the stories of those affected by HIV and AIDS, particularly communities of color disproportionately impacted by the HIV pandemic. I'm asking and encouraging you all to keep the grant provided in budget for the AMP to complete this project. The grant will specifically fund technology needed to complement the physical artworks of the AMP. This will provide important remote access to real stories, resources, and information about HIV and AIDS. This will allow people to learn lessons from our past and build community for today and the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Starr, welcome.
Good morning. I'm Star, a citizen of Seattle. I am here supporting defending the Seattle Police Department by 50% immediately and reinvesting in the community-led solutions because SPD continues to escalate situations through abuse of power and refuses to acknowledge and accept proper de-escalation and trauma-informed care training. Taxpayers' money would be better spent to build the individuals within the community rather than increase jail population. Studies have shown that providing communities with resources and opportunities reduce crime. I would also like to request that SPD's quotas be capped at a lower capacity to not retaliate against the community through abuse of overticketing the public. I support decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity is now four-point plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madeline, welcome.
Hi, my name is Madeline. I am a resident of District Seven. I am calling to ask the council to uphold their commitment to defund the SPD by at least 50% this year and follow the four-point plan put forward by decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. Please reject the mayor's inadequate proposal. It would be reckless to not take action now and to allow the police to continue to harass and assault our population. In addition, I also urge council to support funding 1,000 new affordable housing units in the central district and to amend the COVID-19 to, or proposal to also provide more tiny homehouses and hotel vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next three speakers are Miquess Walden Say, Reverend Will Seals, and Megan Castillo. Welcome, Miquess.
Hi, my name is Miquess Walden Say. I'm calling in regards to defunding SPD. I'm a member of District Five. I support decriminalizing Seattle's and King County Equity is now four-point proposal to defund SPD. The job qualifications between SPD and parking enforcement is the same. They absolutely do not deserve the amount of money we give them. The training requirements for them are 720 hours versus 1,000 hours required to be a barber. A rookie receives $83,000 a year, whereas a UW-registered nurse receives $77,000 a year. Nine officers made over $300,000 a year last year. One made over $400,000 a year. $409 million that they receive, 83% of that is payroll. They have no need to fire officers. They can just reduce the amount of ridiculous salaries they receive. And Councilmember Juarez.
Welcome, Reverend Seals.
Of the Christ Spirit. My name is Willie Seals, the pastor of the Christ Spirit Church, District Two. Thank you, Chairwoman Teresa, and the council for the Jump Start program. I stand with over 200 faith leaders urging the building of 1,000 new affordable homes in the central area. I just want to remind the council that we are at a historical moment in this city and you have a great opportunity to do some amazing things, things that seem impossible. It is impossible until someone does it. The central area used to be the home of so many people who could go to Big Mother Home. So I urge you to support the additional of the homeless population and the funding of the central area community.
Thank you, Reverend Seals. Megan, welcome.
Thank you. I'm calling in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions because as a resident of Capitol Hill, I have witnessed firsthand how the Seattle PD do not make our community safer. SPD is spoiled in resources they only misuse. It's time we take money, control, and responsibilities away from them and into the hands of people, organizations, and departments better equipped to support health and safety in Seattle. Police do not make our community safer. They never have, and they do not have the potential to change for the better. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge council members to support decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment of those funds to replace current nine-one-one operations with a civilian-controlled system. Thank you so much. Please defund SPD by 50%.
Thank you so much. Council colleagues, we have gone for the allotted 45 minutes. If there's no objection, just because we had a delay and folks had to wait, I'm going to extend public comment for another seven minutes. Hearing no objection. I'm going to read the names of folks that we have allotted for this time and greatly thank everybody who's called in today. Again, there will be public comment offered for each of our budget committees that are coming up. There is no vote this afternoon on the select budget, so you will have more time to testify on budget-related matters. There will also be another opportunity to testify on Monday at 2:00 PM at full council related to the spend plan. So this is not the last time. The next speakers, and I'll read them all just so folks know who's in the queue, and then we will go on with our meeting. Sean Rico, Rabbi David Basor, Jane Singer, Barbara Finney, Blair Ferguson, Reverend Dr. JP King, Ivana Inubwe, John Priak, Reggie Ginis, and Reverend Sinda Stenger. Okay, here we go. Sean Rico, welcome.
Hi, my name is Sean Riccio. I am a renter and resident and worker in City Council District Four, and I am calling to support King County Equity Now and decriminalize Seattle's plans for what to do with the money allocated after defunding the police by 50%. The council has already made it clear that they are in support of those plans. I think that they should go forward with that. We can't afford to have a paramilitary police force brutalizing us in this time of crisis. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks in IT, just before we go on, I did call Bridget Harmon earlier and it looks like she is here. So let's go to Bridget really quickly if we can. Bridget, thanks for waiting.
Give me a second while I locate Bridget. Not locating her.
Apologies for that, Bridget. When we called your name earlier, it looked like you were not present, so I did not have the chance to hear from you. Please do send in your comments. Moving on, we have Rabbi David Basor. Welcome, Rabbi.
Hi, I'm Rabbi David Basor, Rabbi of Kadima Reconstructionist Community in District Three, with members in every council district. Today arise with over 220 faith leaders led by black central district clergy to urge the council to commit $50 million per year to build 1,000 new affordable homes in the CD and undo the decades of intentional racist gentrification in the same neighborhood in which Jews and black community were once redlined and forced to live together. Now I support them doing so out of their own agency. Further, I support the four-point plan put forward by decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund the SPD by at least 50%. I say this as a Jewish who understands that safety comes from local communities standing up for one another, not from city and state militarized police. Finally, please support HB 1377 to support permanent housing, more tiny house villages, and no sweeps for our houseless neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane Singer, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jane Singer and I'm a lifelong resident of Seattle on occupied Duamish land, currently living in District Five. I'm here today in support of defunding the Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions because our community keeps us safe while the Seattle Police Department continues to protect property and profit over people. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge the council members to support decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment of those funds to replace current nine-one-one operations with a civilian-controlled system, scale up community-led solutions, fund the community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, welcome.
My name is Barbara Finney. I'm a union member, delegate of the MLK Labor Council, homeowner in G5, and member of the Tax Amazon Movement. Built 1,000 homes in the central district with the new tax on Amazon and big business. The tax would not have been passed without the efforts and leadership of council member Shama Sawant, her council office, Socialist Alternative, and all the organizations and grassroots members of the Tax Amazon Movement. Council, support council member Sawant's amendment to designate 50 million to fund construction of 1,000 new homes in the central area for black working-class people to bring back households displaced over the years from racist gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Blair, welcome.
My name is Blair Ferguson. Hi, my name's Blair Ferguson. I'm a resident of District Three on occupied Duamish land. First of all, city council, thank you for your time. I want to say that my father is a police officer and a quote-unquote "good cop." In fact, he's the best man I know. But the structural racism that all police forces are built on needs to be, for lack of better words, burned to the ground. And defunding SPD by 50% is a good start. Please support the call to defund SPD by 50%. And I encourage the city council to support the four-point plan laid out by decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Reverend Dr. JP King.
I am the Reverend Dr. I am the Reverend Dr. JP Kong, District Three, and I am a pastor of the 113-year-old Japanese Presbyterian church one block south of Jimi Hendrix Park and the Northwest African-American Museum. I have lived and worked in the central area since 2007, and my children are students at Leschi, Washington, and Garfield. I am also a professor of Hebrew Bible at the Seattle School of Theology and Psychology, where primary focus of my work is to bring alive the scriptures' central demands for economic justice and equity. Thus, I join my friends in urging the Budget Committee to adopt the amendment to put $50 million a year toward 1,000 affordable new family homes in the CD. This money is a necessary investment toward dismantling racist policies so that we can not only claim, but prove by our actions that black lives matter.
Thank you. Ivana, welcome.
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Ivana from District Ten, attending today's city council budget hearing to talk about defunding the police department by 50% and reinvesting in community solutions. I wanted to note that the police are anti-black and they descend from flight patrol, so despite all the training, they cannot stop beating, killing, and assaulting black and brown people. It's in their nature. What I'd like to see, or what would it look like to invest these resources and community-based organizations that are not rooted in murdering and lynching? Ron Morgan's over $400,000. William Edwards over $360,000. Stephen Kim over $300,000. That's over $1 million that you can invest in community resources. Don't be swayed by Jimmy Durkin or Carmen Best. There is a plan. Educate yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is John. Welcome, John Pirak. Sorry about that.
Yes. My name is John Pirak, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. First, I feel that providing safety protection for the public is the very first and primary responsibility of all those holding elective office. It is also the most basic expectation of those who elected them. I feel that the people who would suffer the most from radically cutting SPD's budget would be members of Seattle's very diverse populations, people living in economic disadvantaged areas, our youth, the old, the most vulnerable, et cetera. Within our own community, we know Seattle officers as people who do this critical and often dangerous job because they have dedicated their lives to this.
Thank you, John, and please send the remainder of your comments in. Appreciate you waiting. And the last three speakers for this morning are Reggie Glynnis, Travana Thompson-Willy, and Reverend Sinda Stenger. Welcome, Reggie.
My name is Reggie. I am a trans-black organizer with both African and Indigenous ancestry. Seattle is my home. In my home, I've had exactly zero positive interactions with police despite reform. Since the age of six, every police encounter I've had has been marked with terror at the least and grotesque physical violence at the very worst. I'm a public servant, not out of choice, but out of necessity. I was born into this responsibility, and I am not alone. The people have spoken. The time to defund SPD by 50% was yesterday. The time to reinvest and buy pop community was yesterday. The time for the purveyors of this pregnant industrial complex to be removed from office was yesterday. To the mayor and her so-called troops listening in, you're about to lose your job.
Okay, and Travana, welcome.
My great-grandparents. I'm a third-generation black woman from the central district. My great-grandparents moved here from the rural south in the 1950s. Almost all my family has been displaced due to racism and gentrification from the central district. I am with the Tax Amazon Movement. I demand that $50 million is used to fund those 1,000 homes for working-class black families. These families matter. The city council must work around the clock to undo systematic oppression. Black lives matter. Defund SPD by 50%. My brother's friend was Sean, my mother's friend was Charlena. We cannot protect blue lives and not protect black ones. In qualified immunity, free all protesters value life over property. Thank you.
Apologies, I was on mute. And the last person is Reverend Sinda Stenger.
Hi, I'm Sinda Stanger, D1. I served on the CAC for Camp Second Chance and am social justice lay leader at Alki United Church of Christ. Thousands of Seattle residents, disproportionately residents who are black, indigenous, and people of color, experience homelessness and lack access to affordable housing. With the pandemic and the economic downturn, we need to secure safe, affordable homes now. I implore you to invest in the central district housing plan to stop the total gentrification of that historic district. Seattle is better than that to just let economic forces take over. Let's be a leader in the nation, showing the way how to uplift our people and stop white gentrification. We need ultra-low income housing as well. By prioritizing housing resources for people with the lowest incomes in Seattle under 30K, Jump Start will help address the crisis of homelessness and lack of affordable homes. Thank you so much for all that you do.
And thank you so much for all that you do. I want to thank everybody who's called in today. Again, if you could please email us your comments if you didn't get a chance to speak, especially the clergy, folks and faith leaders who are on the line. We really appreciate all you're doing in this time of crisis. We know that a lot of folks are looking for ways to reduce stress, and we appreciate you all calling in, community members, small business folks, and community at large. Thank you for all of your comments today. Please do send the rest of your comments to seattle@council, or sorry, council@seattle.gov, and there will again be public testimony opportunity on Monday starting at 2:00 PM at full council and again here at our select budget committee, starting next Wednesday at 10:00 AM. Again, 8:00 AM is when the sign-up will happen. Thank you, council colleagues. At this point, this concludes our public comment portion of the agenda, and we will move on to other items on the agenda. Will the clerk please read into the record the title of item one?
Agenda item one, Council Ball 119812, amended orders 226000. Agenda Item One, Council Bill 119812, amended ordinance 226000, which adopts the 2020 Budget Making Appropriations from the Emergency Fund for Public Assistance During the COVID-19 Civil Emergency. Making an Appropriation from the General Fund for Public Assistance During the Civil Emergency and Making Appropriations from the Revenue Stabilization Fund for Public Assistance During the Civil Emergency, all by great force vote of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, I'm really excited about our today, this morning's conversation. Today, we are wrapping up our discussion about Progressive Revenue Spend Plan. Again, there's two bills in front of us, both the council bill, which we are about to discuss as Item One, which is our COVID Emergency Relief Fund. And Item Two is our resolution, which is the detailed spend plan that corresponds with the progressive revenue proposal we passed on Monday. I want to thank, last Monday, I want to thank council, central staff, Ally Panucci and Tracy Ratscliffe, who are here with us today to walk through Items One and Two. And just before we start, a huge amount of appreciation for all of your work and in advance for all the walkthrough that you are about to give us, the comprehensive documents that you've provided for us and the public so that they can follow along, and the materials that you will be sharing via the screen here on Zoom. If you want to get those loaded up, that would be great. Before we do that, I'm going to go ahead and officially move that we consider Council Bill 119812, that it's in front of us. I move Council Bill 119812. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee consider Council Bill 119282, and there are a handful of amendments. I'm going to ask central staff walk through the amendments in just a moment. And Ally, if, before you could do that, I'm going to ask central staff folks, Ally and Tracy, before we go into the amendments, so much work has gone into just the bills as they are. Could you please just provide a summary of the base bill in front of us so we have an understanding of the council bill that's being considered for emergency relief related to COVID? As folks will remember, this was introduced in mid-June, and we've held it till now so that we can have this robust conversation related to spend. I'll turn it over to you, Ally, and we see your screen up here, so we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Good morning, council members. The first bill for discussion today is Council Bill 119812, the COVID Relief Bill that authorizes spending $86 million from the city's reserve funds in 2020 to invest in programs and services to support people and businesses impacted by the COVID-19 epidemic. Attachment A to the central staff memo summarizes the proposed investments, and that's what's on my screen right now. This includes support for small businesses, immediate housing programs, support for immigrant and refugee communities, and an expansion of the city's emergency grocery voucher program. The central staff memo posted to today's agenda outlines how this proposal fits in with the proposed rebalancing package that will be discussed in the afternoon session. This includes confirming that this proposed spending from the reserve funds works with the proposed rebalancing package, and it also provides a brief summary of how this proposed spending fits in with the city's broader COVID relief efforts. I won't walk through that in those details now, but I'm happy to answer questions before we move to a discussion of the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Ally. I want to thank all of the council members for your feedback on the COVID 2020 Relief Bill that's in front of us, and just thank you for the bill is introduced. You have provided robust feedback along the way, so thank you in advance. Any additional comments before we move into amendments? Hearing that, I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Juarez is with us, and she just joined just a few minutes after we started. Apologies for the technical difficulties, Councilmember Juarez. We know that you were with us the entire time, including in public comments, so thank you for being with us. I also want to thank-
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Council President Gonzalez, who also helped when we were having technical difficulties this morning. Thank you, Council President, for helping to steer the ship as we got our IT up and running, so thanks. Okay, with that, thanks again, Ally and Tracy. Let's go ahead and consider amendments. The First Amendment is one that I am introducing, so I will move to amend Council Bill 119812 as presented on Amendment One to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment One as presented on the agenda. I'm going to ask central staff to go ahead and walk us through Amendment One, and then we will consider comments and potential vote.
Great, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. For reference, I am using the table that was included in the central staff memo as Attachment P, that is on pages 54 through 56 of the combined central staff memo, and will be sort of using this table throughout the discussion, although I may flip to other pages if needed to provide more detailed responses to council member questions. This First Amendment, sponsored by Councilmember Mosqueta, includes a variety of changes to the bill as introduced. This includes technical and clarifying amendments, as well as changes to the bill that were discussed in the central staff memo or discussed at committee in last week's Select Budget Committee meeting, and that reflects additions and amendments proposed by a variety of council members. So I'll briefly walk through the more substantive changes that are included in this amendment. So this again is Amendment One, Attachment B to the central staff memo. So to the Small Business Support section, there is a change to expand eligibility criteria to allow small businesses with up to 10 FTEs, full-time equivalent employees, rather than five employees, to qualify for assistance, and includes nonprofits with up to 10 FTEs. This was proposed by Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Strauss. This, it also adds in a priority to support business owners with limited English proficiency. This was a change sponsored by Councilmember Gonzalez. And then in the area for supporting childcare providers specifically, the criteria is expanded to include all childcare providers that adhere to labor laws and have a commitment to labor harmony, and it includes some assistance for family, friends, and neighbor providers. In the area of investments to support immigrant and refugee communities, the changes include allowing up to $1,000 payments per eligible individual. This will allow, for example, a couple with children to receive $2,000. It increases the administrative support that can be provided to the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs from 5% to 11%, recognizing the smaller office may need some additional help to administer this program. And it expands the areas of spending to include providing services. Oh, excuse me, and that last change was sponsored by Council President Gonzalez. It also adds language to expand the eligible areas of spending to include services to advise potential recipients of the direct financial support about how such assistance might impact their ability to remain eligible for other assistance programs. That was sponsored by Councilmember Herbold. And prioritizes supporting those who experience structural or institutional barriers to accessing support from other governmental programs and require compliance with the city's rules around making inquiries about one's immigration status, and this was sponsored by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you very much, Ally. I will have a few comments here, and then I know our council colleagues have provided a robust amount of input, so thank you so much for everybody in your initial feedback on the council bill as introduced. We have, I think, really important amendments here, so one of them that we have talked about repeatedly was just making sure that we're getting as much support out the door as possible, given the crisis continues and potentially getting worse with COVID cases continuing to skyrocket. I think that this level of relief that we're providing here is not only needed, it's essential for us to have a healthy community and a more robust economy on the end. This is both about the physical health of our population and also about the resiliency of our city in the long run. I'll turn it over to council members who've offered other changes to this base amendment for any additional comments that you would like to make to highlight some of the amendments that you have provided to this base amendment, any additional comments that folks would like to make. Councilmember Herbold, and did I see another hand? Okay, Councilmember Herbold.
See here. So first off, want to thank the Chair, Councilmember Mosqueta, for bringing forward this consolidated amendment representing the interests of several council members. I also want to thank the Chair for including in this consolidated amendment new language that makes it clear that funds for sheltering associated with COVID-19 cannot be used for concrete shelters. And I just want to speak very briefly about one of the elements of the amendments that is included, and then I have a question about another element sponsored by another council member. So specifically, as it relates to the amendment for aid to immigrant and refugee households, really thankful for the cooperation of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs in developing this amendment and the support of Council President Gonzalez as well. Income-tested benefit eligibility can be very complex for households to navigate, especially in a year when households may be receiving more than one type of unplanned for assistance from local, state, or federal governments. And the community-based organization, of course, who help navigate, help clients navigate these programs themselves might have questions about how benefit and support programs interact. So really thankful that this amendment will help make it possible for organizations and clients to access and provide advice to the folks receiving these benefits so that no one inadvertently loses needed benefits in accepting the assistance from the city. As it relates to one of the questions I have about the ammendatory language in Section 4A related to nonprofit organizations who are eligible for support from the Office of Economic Development, I'm interested to know the intent with the preference for brick-and-mortar small businesses and whether or not that's intended to prioritize brick-and-mortar small businesses over other types of recipients, including nonprofits? Or is it meant to prioritize brick-and-mortar small business over other types of small businesses with the understanding that nonprofits are part of that definition? I recognize that brick-and-mortar businesses may have greater costs associated with the maintenance and upkeep of a space, rent on a space, but I'm just trying to figure out whether or not that prioritization of brick-and-mortar small businesses also allows nonprofits that are brick-and-mortar small businesses to be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you. I can speak to the, oh, Councilmember Strauss, would you like to speak to that? I saw your hand go up.
Yes, and my apologies, my camera was off when I was raising my hand before. I've got some other comments. I can just address Councilmember Herbold, great questions right there, and Councilmember Mosqueta can back me, fill in any areas that I don't cover. The preference for brick-and-mortar businesses is the latter of what you discussed, meaning that businesses operating a space should be prioritized over businesses that are, that don't have a space to operate, a physical brick-and-mortar space. There was no intention of prioritizing that over nonprofits, and so if clarifying language is needed, happy to accept it.
I'll just echo that. Councilmember Herbold, I think it's a great question. One of the feedback that we got from folks at GSBA, for example, were really asking, how does this reconcile the impact that COVID has had on storefronts, brick-and-mortar entities? And so you're absolutely correct, and I agree with Councilmember Strauss. It would include those nonprofits as well. And did you have a follow-up, Councilmember Herbold?
That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I saw Councilmember Strauss's hand, and if there's other hands, please do let me know. Councilmembers-
Yeah, just wanted to speak to the substitute. Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, for putting the substitute together. I was happy to work with you to include the items that are important to me, rather than having to vote on each amendment separately. As well, working with you and Council President Gonzalez, we work to increase the eligibility for small businesses to support any business with up to 10 FTEs rather than five employees total. And why this is important is FTEs, if there are two part-time employees, that counts for one FTE, and so this expands the number of businesses that are able to be supported by our relief, and specifically, it helps address businesses that have part-time workers and labor-heavy business. This change will allow more of our small businesses, restaurants with part-time workers to receive this funding. And just for reference for colleagues, I had originally started this amendment with the number of 25 FTE. Then the 10 FTE was the agreed FTE between our offices for this substitute. I still believe that a higher FTE would best serve our labor-heavy businesses needing COVID relief, and not to make amendments on the fly on the dais today, I'll converse with each of you over the next several days, and depending on those conversations, I may bring an amendment to increase the FTE on Monday, but don't want to confuse the very deliberate conversation that we have today so that we move forward. In addition to that, I also worked to add nonprofits with up to 10 FTEs to be eligible for this support with the stipulation that they must be nonprofits that provide services related to the community's health, safety, environment, or general welfare. Last week, or two weeks ago, I spoke to the nature of nonprofits and how nonprofits are just another tax status, and so I wanted to make sure that when we are looking at nonprofits, we are specifically focusing on those organizations that are providing services. These words, "health, safety, environment, or general welfare," were taken directly out of our city's charter, the preamble to our city's charter, as demonstrating what we as a city need to be doing for our residents, and so that's why I use those words. Those are my remarks. Thank you for all your work, Councilmember Mosqueta.
And thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments on Amendment One? Okay, I am not seeing any, and I'm not hearing any from folks on the line. So I want to again thank you for all of your feedback. Obviously, this is a detailed bill that has many council members' fingerprints on it, so we'll have the chance for additional comments on Monday, assuming final passage. But just want to say thank you to all of you for your input on Amendment One. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment One, seeing no additional further comments. Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of Amendment One? Madam Clerk, I think you might be on mute. It's a morning of technical difficulties. Just going to see if the clerk's office is still with us from IT. If you could confirm that, that'd be great.
This is Amelia Sanchez. Okay, the roll call is Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sawant.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Herbold.
Aye.
And Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries, and the amendment is adopted. Could we have central staff please walk us through Amendment Number Two, which is from Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Morales, in order to consider Amendment Two, would you like to go ahead and move that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I move that we, God, I don't have the script, that I move that we consider Amendment Two.
Wonderful. It's been moved to amend Council Bill 119812 as presented on Amendment Two in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to consider Amendment Two as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. Central staff, why don't we go ahead and have you walk us through it, and then we'll consider comments and possible vote.
Thank you. Amendment Two, sponsored by council members Morales and Councilmember Lewis, allocates at least $3.6 million of the $10.8 million that is allocated under the Immediate Housing category for shelter de-intensification efforts to establish new tiny home villages. This could accommodate between four and five new villages, depending on a variety of factors such as the opening date that impacts the cost to provide services at the villages in 2020, site conditions, site conditions, and size of the village. Any new villages established in 2020 will have an ongoing operational cost that will require identifying funding to support such operations, and I understand the sponsors are working on identifying sources of funding for that ongoing need for these villages and others.
Okay, Councilmember Morales, as the sponsor of this amendment, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you. Make sure I'm not on mute. So thank you, as Ally said, this would allocate- allocate $3.6 million specifically for small tiny house villages. And I do want to acknowledge, you know, we've got a lot of comments and calls about this particular amendment. I think it's important to note that we all agree that the long-term solution to our housing crisis is to build more housing, particularly for folks who are very low-income and who need transitional housing and more assistance in that way. That said, right now, we have 2,500 unsheltered neighbors who are living outside. So we need fast solutions to help them get indoors before the winter comes and before their risk of exposure to coronavirus increases. We know that that is definitely still a problem in our community and will continue to be for quite some time. You know, the other issue is that the mayor does keep talking about the 95 units that they've funded, but we know that there is so much more to do that's not nearly enough. And it needs to be done quickly to help move people off the street. So, you know, we believe that this amendment is important because for less than $4 million, we would more than double that number, that 95, and help people get off the street. Couple that with the funding from ESG, and we can sustain these villages for several years. We still have millions of dollars left for hotels and for other alternatives in addition to this. So I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the tiny house villages are not the answer for everyone. Folks who need, who need, you know, behavioral services won't necessarily get that kind of case management in a tiny house village, but it can help many people get off the street, particularly before the wintertime comes. So they are a type of shelter that is commonly asked for by people who are experiencing homelessness. I've had many people myself tell me directly, as I've been to some of the encampment removals, that if they were given that option, they would much prefer that to living under the highway. So those are some of the reasons why we are proposing this amendment and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, as co-sponsor, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I want to say from the outset that it's been a great privilege to work with Councilmember Morales and follow her leadership on shaping this amendment, to follow through on a commitment that I think a lot of us on this council chair of really what we've been frustrated about over the last several months, where we are seeing increasingly visible chronic homelessness and just so much want on the streets of our city and in our community and not being able to summon a sense of urgency to get more placements for people to successfully exit from living in unsanctioned encampments on the street. And so I'm proud to support this amendment today. You know, I do want to briefly address a couple of concerns that I've heard from some folks in the provider community about the amendment perhaps being a little too prescriptive in carving off a segment of the money that's allocated for de-intensification. And, you know, I do appreciate that we have a lot of providers that are out there that are doing really important work in pursuing different strategies, including hoteling, including, you know, other forms of enhanced shelter. But I really do think, just based on the work that we've been doing over the past seven months, and really engaging with the people that are doing outreach too, like workers with Reach and workers with a lot of our other partners, that one of the most demanded placements, as Councilmember Morales alluded to, to folks that are doing the outreach work from people experiencing chronic homelessness, are placements in these tiny house villages. I think that in terms of the level of investment for the village, in terms of the number of spots, and the stability and comfort that these villages provide to people, it is an investment that we need to be pursuing. You know, I echo Councilmember Morales's comments that we know that ultimately what we really need is permanent supportive housing and that these tiny house villages do not go far enough. But we're in a position right now where we have thousands of people living unsheltered who need a place where they can go right now. We can scale up tiny house villages quickly. We know that they are popular with folks who are experiencing homelessness. And I'm proud to support this amendment as something that can make some material progress on the challenges that we're seeing on our streets.
Okay, thank you very much. Council colleagues, any comments or questions on Amendment 2? Councilmember Peterson, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Do we know how many units of housing or how many units of the tiny homes the $3.6 million would create? And do we know what housing providers are qualified and available to provide five of these villages?
So I think the average number of units per village is about 50. So, you know, depending on how many, how many we are able to fund with this, we could be providing 250 units, tiny homes for people. At this point, there is really only one provider who we are regularly contracting with to do this. But that's not to say that there aren't others who could step in. You know, I think part of the challenge is that there is a, right now anyway, the way these villages are operating is that there is a relationship, I guess, with the NAV team. And so the NAV team is sort of making decisions about who gets access to these. I do think that that is problematic, and we need to make sure that if we are able to build another 250 units, that those, you know, Reach workers, street outreach workers are able to get access to those more directly. And we have some other amendments later on in the conversation that we hope to help address that with as well.
Thank you. Did I see Councilmember Herbold's hand? Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thank you. I have a question that I don't know if the sponsors are prepared to answer, but I believe central staff, this is information from central staff, just trying to get a handle on what happened to the funds that the council provided in last year's budget process specifically for tiny house villages. I, the message that I have from my staff is that there are no more funds in the 2020 budget for tiny house villages and that those funds were not, were not spent for tiny house villages in totality as intended by the council. So would like to know a little bit more about that. And then a question for the sponsors, just interested to know what the plan is for continuing operations for both 2020 and 2021. Is that, are the cost estimates provided in the proposal, do those include operating costs for 2020? Is the intent for 2021 for operating costs to come out of the jumpstart revenue? And my second question is, is I wholeheartedly support the funding of additional tiny house villages, but am sympathetic to some of the concerns that we might be being too prescriptive in this amendment for funding for tiny house villages. But could be, could feel otherwise if I was confident that the city and the operator are, you know, as they say, ready to go, to stand up new villages before the year's end. I just don't want to tie this funding to one option if that one particular model isn't ready to use the resources. And if they're not, then maybe we should consider making the resources available to a broader number of models. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. So we are beginning to look at that. As I said, we're considering ESG funding in part for some of the operations, but can talk with central staff as well to see if there's a way to be additive with the funding that we had considered that we thought earlier in the year was going to be going to support operations.
Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead. Councilmember Strauss, I'm sorry, I believe you're still on mute.
Thank you. It's better than the opposite, I'd say. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I have to echo Councilmember Herbold's points, which I'm a huge supporter of tiny home villages as it provides four walls, a door that the person can lock, and a roof over their head to ensure that somebody has the appropriate shelter that they need. I am just a little bit concerned about the prescriptive nature of this, of this amendment. Really love the intent. And Councilmember Herbold, did Councilmember Morales's answer, did she answer your question? I was left a little unclear.
I think she answered the question that I had about operating costs. I did not hear a response to the question about whether or not the operator in the city were sort of ready to stand up the number of tiny house villages that would correspond to this, the funding that we're looking at making available in 2020. And then I also had the question for central staff around the already allocated 2020 money for tiny house villages. Thank you for checking.
Yes.
Councilmember, before I go to the council sponsors, Ally, did you have a response to Councilmember Herbold's question?
Well, I have a, we will respond to your question, but I want to delay responding fully until this afternoon when my colleague Jeff Sims is on the line, who will have a better sense of all the moving pieces for the tiny home, for those funding to support tiny homes that was adopted in the 2020 budget, the funding that has been used in the COVID response efforts in 2020 already. And then I can confirm that this is in addition to any of that, but I can't fully answer your question exactly tracing those dollars. So I have flagged for him that we will need a response to that question this afternoon to follow up. I will just confirm also that these estimates, the reason why we're saying four to five villages is, depends on when they open. It does build in service costs in 2020, but it depends on when they open and how big they're, like the cost of the service. So it's making some assumptions. And in the amendment sheet itself, there's a table that sort of provides a couple of different scenarios, but it does include service costs. And then as Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Lewis spoke to, they are looking at some of those other sources of funding in 2021 for the ongoing operation costs. And I will also just note that this bill includes some ongoing funding to continue some of the investments to address the COVID epidemic in 2021 as well, but doesn't decide today about exactly which of these programs will need the ongoing funding that will be decided through adoption of the 2021 budget.
And before I turn it back over to the, I saw a thumbs up for Councilmember Herbold. Thank you for answering that question. Before I turn it over to the co-sponsors, I'll give you my feedback as well in an effort to try to give you the last word before we do a vote here. And it looks like Councilmember Swat has a comment too, so perhaps, and Councilmember Gonzalez. Okay, I'll do mine, and then we'll go back through Councilmember Swat and Councilmember Gonzalez, Council President Gonzalez, and then wrap it up with the sponsors. Council colleagues, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. We did hear from advocates, including Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness, SCIU 1199, the Housing Development Consortium, the Low Income Housing Alliance, Representative Nicole Macrae from DESC, that they support additional funding for non-congregate shelters, which would include tiny house villages as the language is currently written. But they did ask that we keep this language the same so that the funding can remain flexible. I think in speaking with some of these folks, we heard broad consensus on cautioning against set-asides that dedicate specific interventions such as tiny homes. They are a huge supporter and supported them in the past. One of the things that had been raised was the many benefits of tiny houses are really important. And sometimes the design cannot always support the needs of people with severe disabilities or behavioral health conditions who require greater staff presence. Also specifically to the COVID crisis that we're trying to respond to in this bill, I'm specifically interested in keeping the language flexible so that we can offer this both for tiny house villages, since those are ready to be stood up relatively quickly, and also acquiring or renting rooms in motels and hotels such as the Aloha Inn, thanks to our partners in hotels and motels who've been offering some of their space if we had additional funding. We know that those rooms could dovetail nicely with our combined efforts to try to get additional funds into tiny house villages in the future. I will be continuing to work with all of you in our budget process to allocate more money for tiny house villages and to follow up with the mayor's office, since they did not spend the money that was allocated previously. I know that's very frustrating for all of us. But I would be advocating for folks to pass on this amendment today so that we can keep the language flexible, and it does still include tiny house villages. With that, I'm going to turn over to Councilmember Swat and then Council President Gonzalez. Councilmember Swat.
Thank you. I will be voting yes on this amendment, and I believe the set aside of this kind for tiny house villages is necessary because our past experience has shown that tiny house villages keep getting shortchanged in the sense that we want all kinds of options on the table, but we want to fund, in my view, we need to be able to fund the options that work the best and based on the feedback we have received from homeless neighbors themselves who have been through homelessness and who can tell us from firsthand experience what works and what doesn't work. Tiny house villages have proven themselves to be the best shelter option short of actual affordable housing. Tiny house villages have community and the safety and dignity of your own private space. Tiny house villages were fought for and won by homeless neighbors themselves and the people who've stood with them because they work. Tiny house villages work both from the perspective of helping people find permanent housing and from the perspective of the quality of life for the people living there, the dignity and the humanity that they receive, in addition to the specific facilities that they are able to access as human beings, as families, and as community members. My office has been proud to support homeless activists fighting for tiny house villages since I first took office in 2014, and I'm happy to support this expansion as well. The People's Budget Movement, year after year, fighting during the budget, has won the first funding to support homeless encampments in the first place, which led to the legislation allowing encampments to be officially permitted. And this year, we won our legislation majorly expanding those available permits throughout the city. We did this in early January. Last fall, working closely with tiny house village residents, the Low Income Housing Institute, Nicholsville, Share Wheel, Members of Socialist Alternative, and hundreds of People's Budget activists, we were able to win $2 million in new funding to expand tiny house villages, which, as I've said, are a proven program. I have heard from hundreds of homeless people who say that this works. More than 500 people signed petitions calling for more tiny house villages, and dozens of tiny house village residents and other advocates have showed up to testify at city council meetings. A group of 43 faith leaders signed a letter to city council calling for more tiny house villages. In fact, some of the same pastors who are advocating for the 1,000 affordable homes for Black working-class community members in the Central District. And I was able to lead a press conference for the True Hope Tiny House Village with clergy and residents some months ago. We did not win the full demand of $12 million at the time for more tiny house villages, but our $2 million victory was a big step in the direction of winning more funds. And the amendment before the council today represents another step in our goal to build enough tiny house villages to get everyone in Seattle into stable shelter with services and community. So if this amendment passes, it will represent another victory for our movement. Now, this afternoon, when council discusses the update to the 2020 budget, we will be discussing a similar budget amendment that comes from my office and from the People's Budget to fund the expansion of five new tiny house villages. The amendment I will be bringing forward from the People's Budget will use, is intended for, to be funded through funds obtained from Pima reimbursement and/or cutting the navigation team that carries out the inhumane and ineffective sweeps of homeless people. I just wanted to mention that as an aside. But regardless of which progressive source of funding is used, I fully intend to support funding for tiny house villages in general, and I hope council members will do the same and, you know, have explicit set-aside for tiny house villages. I will vote yes now, and if necessary, if this amendment doesn't pass, then I will continue to pursue funding through other parts of the 2020 budget, including this afternoon. And I urge all councilmembers to support expanding tiny house villages. If not now, then at least this in the discussion in this afternoon, then when we take a vote in the summer budget, and also when we come back for the autumn budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Swat, Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Just a quick question, and Ally, you may or may not have the answer to this quite yet, but in terms of the anticipated or desired additional four to five tiny home villages, can you just give me? um, it, it, can you just give me a sense of whether you know, whether the sort of, um, wh- what sort of information we have around the sighting of such, um, villages? Like, is it, is it possible to cite an additional five to four villages? And if so, um, you know, is there a sort of an idea of, of where, um, given, um, some of the funding that we've done for some of the other tiny villages? I'm just wondering if, if there's any capacity concerns, um, about just actually being able to cite them in places around the city.
I, um, uh, you, you correctly projected that I, I don't have a, a complete answer for you on that, but I will add that to, um, information that, uh, Jeff Sims can provide. I will say that, um, there, you know, legislation was adopted to make it easier to cite, uh, tiny home villages. And, uh, the estimates and, you know, four to five, that it, it's, it's sort of, we have to make some assumptions, but it could be, you know, a couple of larger villages if those sites are i- identified. But I don't have information immediately available on how, um, if there are actually sites already identified, um, by the providers for this, but I will, um, look into that and follow up. Um, and, and I think, I think this is what other council members have been saying, but whether this amendment passes or not, um, this money can be used for tiny home, tiny home villages.
Chair Mosqueta, can I respond to that question?
Sure. Just let me see if the Council President had a follow-up to that.
Uh, I, um, I probably will, but, um, I'm happy to hear Councilmember Morales's, um, additional information.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond. Um, when we, so Lehigh is the provider who would be able to do this. And, um, in our conversations with them, they are prepared. Uh, they have five sites that are ready, uh, mostly in District Two and District Four. Um, my district would welcome the opportunity to, uh, to host a couple more tiny house villages. So, um, and then, uh, the other question that was asked, I think it is in Ally's, um, documents somewhere, but the operating costs are about $900,000 a year. Um, this, yeah, so, uh, four million. Um, sorry, I can't read the document right now that Ally has up. But, um, those are, that information is included also in the, um, packet that we received.
Um, thank you for that, Councilmember, uh, Morales, because, uh, you know, I think there was, um, I'm asking the question, um, specifically because we have, the city council in particular has advocated for additional funds for tiny home villages in the past, um, uh, which I'm supportive of. And the issue is, is Councilmember, uh, Mosqueta, um, um, described, you know, we can allocate dollars, but we can't force the mayor to spend the, the appropriated dollars. And so I, I want to make sure that any sort of additional funding that we're providing in this space, that, um, we've heard directly from, uh, the, the organization that is primarily responsible or has been primarily responsible for development of tiny home villages, that they believe that it's feasible to do so. Um, and so I just think it's important for us to get that out on the, on the record now publicly that, um, in terms of, um, uh, Lehigh, who is a nonprofit organization who does most of the, if not exclusively, the, the tiny home village, uh, uh, projects for us, that they've, um, communicated with you that they have the capacity and ability to do that and that there's space somewhere in the city in order to effectuate the intent, um, here. So, uh, I'm really appreciate being able to, um, get that information, um, uh, from you and, um, appreciate the effort around, um, this, um, uh, potential amendment. Um, I, 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 I still think that I share the concerns that were expressed by Councilmember Herbold and Chair Mosqueta and, and others around, um, uh, whether we need to be this prescriptive, um, in order to effectuate the intent here. Um, but I'm happy to continue to, um, uh, consider additional information this afternoon and, and in the ramp up to, um, to Monday as, as we continue to, um, develop this. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to have ongoing conversations about how to, um, be less prescriptive in the language, um, so that we can signal that as a priority, we would like to prioritize, um, four or five new or expanded tiny home villages, but then allow for use of the $3.6 million if that is not doable by a certain period of time. And if the, um, sponsors are amenable to sort of having a conversation about how to, how to, uh, finesse the language a little bit to, um, not be so prescriptive, but still signal that there is an, a desire for, for potential prioritization of those dollars to fund, um, those efforts. I would certainly be interested in, um, having those conversations, um, offline.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Swat.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, we, uh, in my office have also discussed with Lehigh, and we have the same information, just want to confirm that they have confirmed that they have the capacity to cite and, uh, make progress and, you know, get results on five tiny house villages this year. And they will be able to build more capacity, additional capacity next year. So they are, they are, they're certainly not, uh, letting the grass grow under their feet. They're, uh, extremely on the move. And as far as why have, uh, uh, an, an explicit set aside, and I wouldn't call it overly prescriptive, it's because of the experience. As I've said, we should remember what happened in the budget last year. We fought for and won $2 million for tiny house villages. We fought for proviso to say that they would only be used for tiny house villages, but in the end, uh, the proviso was amended by, uh, the council to be, uh, in, in with the same argument that's been made here, which is to be less prescriptive. And then the mayor did basically nothing. And those are the correct questions that council members are asking. Why didn't the mayor do anything? But then, but we have to learn from that experience and actually, uh, do have a set aside. So, uh, if, if council members are not going to be supporting this amendment, then I really hope that we can, um, have support for the amendment that, uh, my office is bringing forward in the budget discussion. Thank you.
Okay, um, closing comments. Uh, we'll go to the council sponsors in just a moment, Councilmember Herbold, to wrap us up.
Thank you. Um, so I, I mentioned my support for tiny house villages as well as my, my reservations around a set aside. If, um, the operator, um, was not prepared to, um, cite, um, uh, five tiny house villages in 2020, um, I, um, too, have received, uh, confirmation that, um, they, uh, both have property and, um, uh, and are, are prepared to do this work in 2020. So, um, my reservations have been, have been satisfied. But, uh, because I'm really interested in ensuring, um, that some version of this, uh, amendment passes, I'm wondering if the sponsors would be open to pulling it and bringing it up at full council um, so that maybe we could, um, uh, uh, address some of the other concerns of council members and, and, uh, bring something forward that has, um, a, a full response, a full support of, of the council in, in doing so.
Councilmember Morales, I see you're off mute. And Councilmember Lewis, um, welcome your feedback as well. Councilmember Morales, did you want to go first?
Sure. Um, you know, I, I'm happy to, to pull this for now and, um, and dig a little deeper into some of the particular questions that folks have. Um, I, I do want to echo what Councilmember Swat said, which is, a- and Councilmember Gonzalez, which is that, um, we have, we are trying to be fairly prescriptive because, uh, this council has been very clear in the desire to see these sorts of non-congregate shelters, um, invested in and, and used as an opportunity to really move people particularly in COVID uh, into safer shelter, not just to get people, uh, into a more stable living situation, but also to make sure that they are protected from, uh, the risk of exposure. So, um, and because that doesn't seem to be happening, we are trying to be really, uh, clear, uh, again, about what this money can be used for. So, um, as I said, I'm, I'm happy to pull it for now and, and keep having this conversation. Um, but I, I do want to emphasize, um, how important it is that we find a way to ensure that it is non-congregate shelters that we are supporting, uh, with this money and that that is what we expect, uh, the money to be spent on. Thank you.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Lewis, did you have a comment on that as a co-sponsor?
Yeah, so no, I, I don't have any, um, issue with waiting until Monday to maybe revisit this and, and take a look at it a little more. I mean, I would just flag now, I don't, I don't really see how it's going to change that materially between now and Monday. Um, quite frankly, uh, in the sense that, I mean, this is the set aside that is necessary to realize the, the operational goals of what, um, Lehigh has said. Um, you know, they're capable of doing and capable of doing in 2020. I, I guess just to add my voice to the chorus of, uh, Councilmembers Morales, Herbold, and Swat, who, who have, um, can, uh, can verify that Lehigh is in a position to, to do this. Um, I've been talking to, um, Lehigh and their team on probably about a weekly basis, um, for months, uh, where their issue has not been, um, has not been cites. Their issue has been, um, getting some stream of money, um, to scale up these, um, these places that, that they can provide a semi-permanent shelter for folks that are currently in non-sanctioned encampments. So, um, you know, in terms of materially, like, the different accesses of this bill, you know, I mean, if, if we make it a little more broad and with a three-six, 3.6 million could be spent on, or if we reduce the more prescriptive amount, you know, the, I mean, the effect of that is going to be, that it's going to re- reduce our ability to get that money, um, more prescriptively earmarked for Lehigh or whatever operator and out the door. Um, so that's why I'm just saying, I don't really see, like, the, you know, there was a lot of intentionality behind the 3.6 million mark, um, based on those goals. Um, but I'm happy to wait till Monday and maybe let this ruminate a little bit more. And, um, you know, I mean, I would also say too, just the last thing, because it, I mean, a lot has been said about the merits of the tiny house villages. But, um, you know, I mean, the, the, uh, the, the executive and HSD and the mayor's office have also, um, signaled, um, that they, they support the model of the tiny house villages, certainly more than they support, um, uh, have expressed support for hoteling or other kinds of strategies. So, you know, I, I really do think we could have an opportunity to move quickly, um, on this if we did have a set aside. Um, but I, I am happy to talk about it for a few more days, um, and maybe make the final decision on Monday.
Okay, wonderful. Well, we know that this will come back on Monday, and there will be a conversation this afternoon, uh, for the budget discussions, uh, to finalize comments. Councilmember, uh, President Gonzalez, and then, um, uh, we will move on. Uh, Councilmember Swat after that. Okay. Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you. Um, as one of the people who just expressed, uh, um, some s- soft concerns, um, I, I, I don't feel like I, I don't feel like I want to delay a vote on this particular amendment. Um, so, um, you know, if, a- again, I don't want to sort of create a, an issue by backtracking on, um, whether or not we take a vote on this amendment, uh, today. I think, um, I think that for those who continue to have concerns, there's always an abstention opportunity, and we can still allow the, um, amendment to move forward. And, um, and those who feel like they need to abstain can abstain, and we can move forward. I think that Councilmember Lewis's remarks that, um, it, the language is not likely to change more is probably true. Um, I mean, the language is very simple in the amendment. It is, quote, "At least $3.6 million of this funding shall be used to establish four or five new or expanded tiny home villages." Close quote. It's not complex ammendatory language. I think the issue that I was really flagging, and I'll say it probably more directly now, um, and, and would be interested in hearing from either of the co-sponsors or response to this is what happens, uh, when, and I'm going to say when, not if, what happens when the, uh, mayor refuses to spend $3.6 million of the COVID relief jumpstart appropriation? So, so what happens um, to our overall effort around de-intensification of congregate shelter if the mayor refuses or when the mayor refuses to spend $3.6 million? And so I think, I just want to make sure that we have a clear answer to, um, to that. Um, because what I'd, I, what I want to avoid is having $3.6 dollar, dollars, $3.6 million not spent because of, uh, potential refusal to not spend those dollars um, because we have been prescriptive about it. That, I mean, that's just sort of my honest, uh, um, concern. And I, and I just sort of want to get a better understanding of sort of what our paths are if and when that occurs.
I'll let the council sponsors, um, speak to that. I also will note that if this is pulled today, we do have some suggested language that I know was emailed this morning from the coalition. Um, so there is possibility that that language could be massaged and, um, uh, seem amenable by those, the, the sponsors of the amendment prior to Monday. Um, but let's have them answer that question real quick, um, and then Councilmember.
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, you know, uh, Council President, I totally understand what you're saying. Uh, we know that this is in fact the pattern that we've had, uh, regarding this particular kind of, um, uh, homeless response. Um, but, but that, that risk is there for this entire proposal, right? I mean, everything that we're trying to do right now risks the mayor not actually spending the money on it. So, um, um, like I said, I, um, I, I agree that there is probably not a lot we can do with this language. I'm happy to look at what, uh, what was sent this morning. I, I haven't seen it, uh, candidly. Um, but, you know, if, if we, if we want to review that and come back to it on Monday, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Um, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Swat, I saw your hand up. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lewis, did you also have a response before Councilmember Swat?
Right, I, I was just going to say really briefly, um, the, the only other thing I would add is that, uh, you know, actually, of the de-intensification strategies, the executive has, has posed some of the most enthusiasm for, um, has been tiny house villages, um, certainly more than hoteling, um, and some of the other opportunities. So I, I don't, I don't actually know that hostility on this point is inevitable, um, necessarily. Um, although I, you know, I, I mean, all of the, the other concerns that the council members, um, Gonzalez and Morales raised about general uncertainty around jumpstart, sure. But, um, you know, I, just from my conversations with the mayor's office and HSD, I, I don't know that there is, um, overt hostility to this, this type of a de-intensification strategy. Um, so, uh, I mean, I, I would just say I, I don't know that there will be inevitable conflict on that part, on that point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Swat.
Thank you. I, I think, uh, Councilmember Morales, uh, ma- made a good point that, uh, in, in reality, uh, the mayor could decide, the mayor's office or any of the city departments, if there was not actually a movement of ordinary people pushing for, uh, r- results that have been promised, could, um, fail to do any of the things that we are saying as a council. So I think, given, uh, and I'm going to repeat myself here, given the past experience with the mayor having, uh, shown her, uh, inability and or unwillingness to actually allocate the funds for tiny house villages that the city council has intended for tiny house villages, I think it is important to have specific language on that, whether it's this amendment or an amendment from my office that passes in the budget discussion that's separate. But the intent of either amendment is that we actually push towards holding the mayor's office accountable to funding tiny house villages. I think that's the main component here is actually making that happen. And, uh, if the sponsors of this amendment decide to withdraw it, I mean, as I've said, I've al- already declared support for it. So if you move it, then I, uh, move it forward, then I, I will be voting yes on it. But if you decide to withdraw it, then I wanted to urge you to, uh, co-sponsor the amendment from my office so that together we can, um, make sure that, uh, the intent of actually providing this direction for tiny house villages is attained through the budget discussion and the budget vote.
Okay, that's all the questions I saw, um, and it's, it is been moved and seconded, so it is the, um, sponsors' purview, uh, what you would like to do this morning.
Yeah, I think, um, I think I'd like to go ahead and call the question. And, um, you know, we can continue to have conversation and, and, um, make some changes on Monday if that seems necessary. But I think, um, I think it would be important for us to go ahead and take a vote.
All right.
So.
Thank you for your, um, directness there. We will call the question then. Um, council colleagues, appreciate the, uh, feedback. And again, uh, we will, um, have an opportunity to continue conversations on this on Monday. I just want to make sure that folks know that this conversation should be reflective. of support for non-congregate shelters, including tiny house villages. The existing language is inclusive of tiny house villages, so really the question is about a specific dollar set aside. Obviously, during the time of COVID, we need 24/7 shelter options, and that is not what's being currently provided by the administration. It is not a healthy place to be in congregate settings. We know we have about 500 people who are currently in congregate shelters still, and tiny house villages, along with individual rooms, as was identified in the letter we received from community partners, are much better than the current situation. So I don't want anyone to conflate this conversation or discussion to not be supportive of tiny houses, when I think all of our records stand firm about supporting tiny houses in the past. With that, as the amendment currently stands, let's go ahead and call the roll, and recognizing that there could be potential language even further amended by Monday if it gets adopted. Madam Clerk, why don't we call the roll?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
No.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Abstained.
Gonzalez.
Abstained.
Herbald.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
No.
Five in favor, two opposed, two abstained.
Okay, wonderful. So the amendment is adopted. Congratulations, Councilmembers Morales and Lewis. Thank you for your work on this. I believe that there are some follow-up questions that folks may have, but as it stands, we do have this language adopted in the council bill as it's currently being amended. So thank you for all of your work and for all of the stakeholders who have written in. We really appreciate it. Let's move on to item, sorry, agenda number three. Amendment number three. Thank you. Chair Mosqueta, would you like me to describe the amendment first? Yeah, why don't we have you describe the amendment first, and then I'll call on the sponsor. Great, thank you. So amendment three to Council Bill 119812 would add $9 million in spending, excuse me, this is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss, this would add $9 million in spending from the reserve funds to provide additional support for small businesses in 2020, increasing the total amount of spending from 14.1 million to 23.1 million. This increases the total spending in 2020 to $95 million. I'll just note here that if this amendment is adopted and Amendment to Resolution 31957 is adopted, this table incorrectly refers you to Attachment H. It should actually be Attachment L, excuse me, the renumbering was happening very rapidly last night. So there is an associated amendment, if this amendment passes, there'll be another amendment to the resolution just to reflect that change. Wonderful. Councilmember Strauss, as the sponsor of amendment three, would you like to move it?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I move to consider amendment three.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider and adopt amendment three as presented on the agenda and described by Central Staff. Councilmember Strauss, as sponsor of the amendment, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Small businesses are the fabric of our community, and if this legislation is about an economic stimulus package, then we should be providing the support to as many small businesses as possible. This amendment would allocate an additional $9 million from the Revenue Stabilization Fund for small business relief. The additional $9 million would bring the total for small business relief to 23.1 million. With this amendment, we can provide support in the form of $10,000 grants to an additional 855 small businesses, for a total of nearly 2,200 small businesses. If the amendment passes, I will be bringing a related amendment to the Spend Plan Resolution to ensure that we backfill the Revenue Stabilization Fund, as we were doing for the other 2020 expenditures. We know that roughly 9,000 eligible small businesses applied for this funding during the initial round, and unfortunately, our, this bill and our previous work could only provide enough funding for about 1,300 of them. I recognize that even this amount of money is not enough to address this full scale of the crisis, but if we can support an additional 855 small businesses in our community, we absolutely should. If this amendment doesn't pass, I would like to bring another amendment that would right-size our investments to ensure that small businesses are 25% of of the overall package. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss. Not seeing any hands, I'll offer this. Council colleagues, I am supportive of this amendment of the funding needs related to COVID. We want to make sure that being, we're being responsive to the urgent needs, so I support increasing the pot of money for some of these small businesses, especially given that so few of the applicants for the city's small businesses assistance in the first round were actually funded. Reading a story yesterday on the potential 20% of restaurants and small businesses that are going to be out of business soon, I can see why this amendment is needed, and we want to do all that we can do during this time of COVID to respond to this crisis and provide responsible measures to ensure that small businesses and nonprofits, thank you, Councilmember Herbald, have support that they need, so just want to offer that note of support. Councilmember Herbald, let's see your off view, and then Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you. I am, of course, supportive of expanding the resources available to small businesses and, including small businesses that are nonprofit businesses, but I am really concerned about continuing to dive into our cities' emergency fund balances. We are with our Jump Start spending plan already, using a lot of those dollars. We have heard from Director, Budget Director Ben Noble, about the need to be able to access some of those dollars in 2021, and a number of us are members of the Labor Relations Policy Committee, and we are hearing some some dire predictions for 2021 as it relates to layoffs, furloughs, and and the need to explore other options to address what are going to be really intense, I think, COVID-19, 2021 budget impacts. And so I appreciate the sponsor, Councilmember Strauss, referenced a plan to to pay the emergency fund balances back, but without understanding what what that plan might be, I I can't support the further reduction of of those fund sources prior to 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I, in addition to the concerns expressed by Councilmember Herbald, am also, unfortunately, not able to support this amendment at this time. You know, I was really glad to work with Councilmember Strauss's office to lift the eligibility cap to 10 FTEs for small business support in Amendment One, which was built into, you know, the base there, and ideally recognizing that this cap, eligibility cap, will allow the additional flexibility to capture more small businesses without opening up eligibility too much. I do think that in this effort overall, it's important that we stay focused on the small businesses that are in need of help without unintentionally making the mom-and-pop places. Many of us imagine when we think of small businesses, compete with businesses who have back offices that handle payroll, administrative work, and have the capacity to apply for these grants. So my office has heard from advocates sharing that we need to have a mixed strategy in supporting small businesses. Cash grants and stabilization funds are a start, and, you know, can certainly be a lifeline for some of these small businesses. But, you know, I think that, again, in addition to the fiscal policy concerns expressed by Councilmember Herbald, one of the other concerns I have about this particular amendment is that is that there there's, there isn't a clear set of language around racial equity and how to center equity in the disbursement of the cash assistance. And and I have heard that the Office of Economic Development, there may be some concerns about whether or not they can fulfill the scale of what they are being proposed to do through this additional $9 million. So so I think, you know, it's important for us to recognize that this cash assistance program can be similar or analogous to what we saw in the federal government's PPP program. And I think that, obviously, that federal government's PPP program offered us some lessons in how it's important for us to apply an equity lens in our approach to small business support. You know, businesses that had relationships to big banks or other ways to tap into capital in the federal program did very well in that application process, but unsurprisingly, we also saw that there was a huge amount of racial disparities in who was able to successfully apply, and therefore who was able to get awards and who was not awarded. And so we know through the federal program, again, which I see as sort of an analogous effort here at the city, is that about 90% of BIPOC minority and women-owned businesses were shut out of the of the federal government program, and I just don't want to see Seattle have a similar story or anything close to that. So I still have a few questions about sort of what we're we're doing through this amendment. So some of those questions are what will be the fiscal impact of using additional reserve funds? I think Councilmember Herbald has already sort of highlighted one potential fiscal impact is sort of taking from the reserve funds in the way proposed could have pretty devastating impacts on the need to access those dollars to avoid furloughs, for example. What is the capacity of the Office of Economic Development to ensure timely delivery of grants with the initial round of small business stabilization grants? What is the capacity of OED to do this through a lens that does not leave businesses with capacity challenges or barriers like language behind? And and lastly, how can we ensure that what happened with the federal PPP grants do not happen in our efforts here in the city of Seattle? So, again, I think that the the funding that we have available now for OED, my understanding is that they're ready to sort of shepherd those dollars. These equity questions still exist even in that context, and we'll be working on that in my office to sort of make sure that there's some sort of equity-centered mechanism for getting those funds to where they need to go. But I also think that it's important to allow OED an opportunity to get the program right, and I think that the original size as proposed in Jump Start Seattle will stand the greatest chance of allowing OED success and being able to establish the program before we scale up to the level that would be required if this amendment were to pass. So ba- based on that, I'm likely not going to support this amendment at this juncture, but that certainly doesn't mean that I don't support the overall effort to continue to look at these economic stimulus opportunities for our smallest businesses, and we did so through some of the work that was included in Amendment One. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Any additional comments? Okay, Councilmember Strauss, did you have any additional comments, or you had alluded to another amendment? I will defer to you to sort of wrap up the comments on this conversation on Amendment Three.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I did have another amendment that I could bring forward that would require the rules to be suspended because I have not distributed it, which would disperse the $9 million. 5.6 million would be allocated to small businesses, and then an even disbursement to all other support for immigrant refugee committees, food assistance program, childcare support. What I'm hearing is that there is more of a concern about running down all of our emergency funding, and I think that Council President's comments about making sure that there's an equitable distribution of these funds is very important. And so if this amendment does not pass, I will likely bring forward another amendment on Monday that just brings forward $5.6 million into the Small Business Stabilization Fund to make that 25% of the overall spending and bring forward additional equitable distribution language as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss. Just to confirm, you would like to move forward with a vote on this amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Seeing no additional comments, okay, pausing. Wonderful. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
No.
Morales.
No.
Peterson.
Abstained.
Sawant.
Abstained.
Strauss.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
No.
Herbald.
No.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Three in favor, three opposed, four opposed, and two abstained.
Could you repeat that, Madam Clerk?
Three in favor, four opposed, two abstained.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The motion does not carry. The amendment is not adopted. Councilmember Strauss, thank you for the feedback. We understand that you will potentially be circulating something prior to Monday, potentially. And with that, we want to thank you for bringing that forward and to our colleagues for the robust discussion. We have one more amendment in front of us, and I will turn to Ali Panucci from Central Staff to walk us through this final amendment.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Amendment four, sponsored by Councilmember Strauss, would add a new section to the resolution expressing the council's intent to consider legislation that would reduce the tax obligations for small businesses. The intent is to consider the needs of small businesses, along with the potential impacts, any reductions in the BNO tax revenue may have on the city's funds.
Okay, thank you very much. And Councilmember Strauss, this is, again, your amendment. Would you like to speak to it? I'm sorry, would you like to move it for our consideration?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I move to consider amendment four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Strauss, as sponsor of this amendment, you are recognized to address this amendment.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. In line with my previous amendment, I have spoken to so many small businesses across my community, and there have been a range of issues from rental assistance to stabilization funds, to requesting BNO relief, and one of the reasons why I brought the amendment from the stabilization fund is because most businesses came back to me stating that having a pool of money that they could choose where it was used was most helpful. And so with regard to small, hearing from small businesses about BNO taxes, I continue to hear that this is one of their biggest problems, especially during the crisis, because it is levied based on gross revenue rather than profit. While BNO tax is a separate issue from this legislation, this amendment would express council's intent to consider additional small business support in the form of relief from BNO taxes for certain small businesses. This does have an impact on our future city revenue, which is why further discussion and analysis is needed. This is simply stating that we would, the council intends to consider additional support through BNO relief. There are still a lot of questions that need to be answered if we go down this path, such as who would receive the relief and how much, and I believe that it is important that we consider these questions during the rebalancing discussions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. I saw Councilmember Lewis up next. Councilmember Lewis, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. So I really want to thank Councilmember Strauss for coming forward with this. I'm very proud to support this amendment. I really do think that, you know, when we talk about our regressive tax system, and and I would count the way we assess BNO tax as having regressive implications on a lot of our small businesses in the city, I think it is important that we we talk about relief in some cases, in addition to seeking higher taxes on people who can afford to pay more, like our highest earning corporations or wealthy individuals. We also need to look at how we can reduce regressive taxes, and we, as a city, don't have a lot of tools, for example, to really get our sleeves rolled up and and roll back sales tax or or rebate sales tax, since the collection is centralized with the state. BNO is something where we really could provide some targeted relief and get around the prohibition on gift of public funds, because we are rebating back taxes. Instead of giving a, you know, giving a gift of public funds, we can rebate taxes, and it's a way that we can provide some direct relief. Certainly interested in in looking at ways we do this, where we can build an equity into who is receiving the relief, that we can make sure that it's it's truly affecting small businesses and not not big ones. But I do think that this
Any additional comments? Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I am going to support this particular amendment. Want to thank Councilmember Strauss for bringing it forward. I think the amendment recognizes the need for flexibility and looks at some level of relief in the business and occupation tax area for small businesses. Of course, there are still a lot of remaining questions. Councilmember Strauss already identified what some of those would be. First and foremost would be what the reduction, any potential reduction in taxes as opposed to complete abatement of tax liability, but what a reduction of tax obligation would be on the overall revenue picture for the city of Seattle. Obviously, that's an important threshold question as we head into ongoing budget deficits as a result of the economic crisis caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we have to be very thoughtful and careful about making sure that we have a good fiscal analysis of what the impact will be. The other thing that we have heard that I'd be interested in pursuing is the opportunity to look at not necessarily reduction-only strategies in this space, but what it would look like to have deferred payment of BNO tax liability. We've heard directly from some small businesses that moving due dates further out, as was previously done, on the payment of BNO was actually really helpful and helped businesses both fulfill their business and occupation tax liability while also adapting their business model to continue to have income revenue coming in the door to stay open. So I think, I think there's an opportunity to have some sort of mixture of relief here that could be reduction in some instances, but in other instances could just be deferral of the tax liability without impact to the full amount of tax liability owned. So just want to signal my support of this overall concept, but my ongoing interest and intent in pursuing some other possibilities through the intent language that is included in Amendment Four. And want to confirm with Ali, after saying all of that, that the language in Amendment Four is broad enough to allow the kind of scope of work that I've described to actually occur. And if it's not broad enough to allow for that work to occur, would be happy to have offline conversations with Councilmember Strauss about a potential friendly amendment for us to consider on Monday.
Wonderful, thank you. I saw Councilmember Sawant.
Can I get an answer to that question?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Council President. Do the Central Staff have an answer to that?
Yeah, thank you, Council President Gonzalez, Chair Mosqueta. Yes, I think it is broad enough, and I imagine that this is likely work that your Central Staff will be working on. And so this wouldn't limit you to exploring one specific strategy of how we sort of reduce the tax, you know, obligation, the burdens, that sort of thing. So I don't think it is necessary in particular because it would be your own staff likely working on this. So I have noted it down, and I'm happy to talk more about changing the language, but I think it addresses, it can address a variety of options. And as we are likely to do, we will always come with different ways you could try to achieve your goals when we're trying to help you address a certain concern or policy goal.
Thank you, Ali. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Sawant, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify to the members of the public and the movement who might be watching that my office will be supporting this amendment because its intent is to stating, it's stating council's intent to consider lowering BNO taxes for small businesses in the future. And I just want to clarify that that's why we are supporting this, because we don't support lowering taxes of any kind, including BNO taxes, on big businesses, in which case, you know, if we had taxes only on big businesses, they would be overwhelmingly progressive. And because this is making it very clear, it's about reducing the tax burden on small businesses who are already overburdened, I'll be voting yes.
Wonderful. Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to express my support for this and thank Councilmember Strauss for raising the issue. I know this is an issue longstanding. Councilmember O'Brien was looking at how to adjust this BNO tax a couple of years ago. My office started asking questions of Central Staff in January. So I'm eager to support this and look forward to working with you on whatever ends up moving forward here. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. I am not seeing any additional comments. Councilmember Strauss, as the prime sponsor, did you have any closing comments?
No, just thank you, everyone, for your consideration. We do know that the smallest businesses here in our city will, may and will need BNO relief and that, and we need to take this into consideration as we move forward. Thank you, Chair.
All right, well, thank you all. I'll also be supporting this amendment today. Let's also remember there was a statement of legislative intent that was submitted last year. It is due back in September to explore changes to the BNO tax structure. So I think that'll be a nice complement to this. Looking forward to working with you all and the sponsor of this amendment to implement those recommendations to frankly create a more progressive tax structure. As Councilmember Sawant mentioned, that this is another strategy for us to try to create a more progressive tax structure in the most progressive tax structure state in the country. So happy to support this. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Four?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Wonderful, thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Are there any additional amendments to the council bill in front of us? I'm not aware of any. I'm not seeing anybody walk any on. Thank you, council colleagues. We now have council bill in front of us that has been amended. I would like to open the floor to any final comments, recognizing we still have another bill to vote on. And we, I will also note for folks, want to give people at least a half an hour break before the 2:00 PM meeting. So if there are final comments, please go ahead on council bill, la, 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 on the council bill in front of us. Any additional comments? Okay, I will make some. I want to thank everybody for all of their work, especially Central Staff, the folks in my office, Aaron Howes, Sajjal Preet, Freddy de Cuevas, and Arita Basu for their work on this COVID emergency relief. A lot of outreach has happened, not just with small businesses, but this also includes outreach to workers, immigrants and refugee organizations, and individuals, folks who are working to provide childcare in this city. A huge shout out to 925, SEU 925, who worked with us on language to make sure that small childcare providers could be supported in this COVID relief so that more people can have adequate and affordable and accessible childcare for their kiddos as more people are being asked to go back to work or are being forced to go back to work because unemployment is running out or they haven't been able to access special support. This is going to provide tremendous relief to the community at large, and I think we've carefully targeted the folks who we are hoping to uplift in this moment of crisis with some additional relief to step in where the federal and state government haven't yet been able to do so and to really respond with the urgency that this COVID crisis needs. I want to thank all of you for your work on this, and we'll have more opportunities for additional conversation and a vote on the final bill on Monday. Not seeing additional comments. So Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the bill as amended?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Wonderful, thank you all. The motion carries and the committee recommends passage of the bill as amended. This will be sent to the July 20 Seattle City Council Full Council Meeting for final consideration. Okay, moving on to item number two, I will also ask Madam Clerk to read into the record item number two, and then I'll have some comments. Madam Clerk, please read the title of item two into the record.
Agenda item two, Resolution 31957, establishing spending details by year and program area for the spending plan adopted by the ordinance introduced as Council Bill 119811 that established the authorized use of the proceeds generated from the payroll expense tax authorized by the ordinance introduced as Council Bill 119810 for briefing discussion impossible doubt.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I'm going to ask Central Staff if you could just close your shared screen and reopen it again. For some reason, on my end, there's some black boxes, so I want to make sure that it's appearing correctly for the viewing audience. It just might be a technical glitch. As we are reloading that screen for the viewing public, I will note that we are going to adjourn in about 45 minutes, so folks get a half an hour break. If we are not done with item number two, we will hold this item over into the afternoon session. This afternoon, we do have presentations from Central Staff and from a community panel, so we have plenty of time to still get through the issue identification, which will still happen this afternoon. I want to thank you for your flexibility and for your generous times on Wednesdays and Mondays. We know they're long days, so thank you. I know the council president feels the long days on Mondays as well, and so we appreciate all of your work throughout the day today. But that will give us a half an hour break. Just wanted to make sure that we had that information available for the public. So we have, I think, the ability to see the screen now. We'll let you know, Ali, if something comes back up again, but it was offering some small black boxes there. Why don't we have you go ahead and, oh, thank you. Why don't we have you go ahead and read into the record, or sorry, read for the public's knowledge what the bill, as an underlying bill, does. And in order for us to do this, I'm going to go ahead and move to have item two before us. I moved to have item two before us. Is there a second?
Second.
If the move is seconded to have item two before us, I would ask the Central Staff to walk us through the base bill first before we move on to the amendment center in front of us. And Ali, I'll turn it back over to you, and thank you both, Ali and Tracy, for still being with us on this item.
Great, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Resolution 31957 includes spending details by year and program area for the proceeds from the recently adopted Jump Start Payroll Tax. After passage of that tax, council also passed Council Bill 119811 that established the broad spending categories for the proceeds from that tax that affirmed the council's intent to adopt a resolution outlining these spending details by year and program area. The resolution is introduced, was developed using the details that were originally included in that spending plan ordinance introduced on June 22 that proposed investments in housing, economic revitalization, and the Equitable Development Initiative, and includes some additional details. This is, these details are described on page three and four of the Central Staff memo, and I'll briefly describe them here. In the Housing and Services category, changes included adding specific green building requirements for the proposed investments in affordable rental housing and allocating 10% of the funds within that category for investments to support a community acquisition, development, and program support fund to affirmatively further fair housing and to address past discriminatory policies and practices. Within the Economic Revitalization section, the resolution as introduced specifies that investments in businesses, workforce development, and business districts will include programs that retrain workers who are transitioning to a new profession. And then it includes a change that was, excuse me, sponsored by Councilmember Peterson to include nonprofit organizations, and then language to prioritize those investments in businesses from marginalized communities, such as those led by Black Indigenous and people of color, and to prevent economic displacement. In addition, the resolution as introduced adds a specific allocation of the funds to implement the strategies called for in the Green New Deal resolution. And then with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Okay, well, first, I want to say thank you to all of our council colleagues. You have had a tremendous impact on the language that was introduced here in this resolution. The bill as originally introduced was converted to a high-level spend plan that corresponded with the revenue proposal that we passed. And based on that base proposed bill, we are reintroducing this resolution with tremendous feedback from all of our council members here. I want to spend just a quick second to see if anybody would like to highlight some of the incredible amendments that they have included in this underlying bill, because sometimes when we just focus on amendments, we don't get a chance to really underscore the important and incredible work that has gone into the base bill. So is there any individual who would like to speak to some of the amendment language that they have included in this resolution in front of us? I'm sorry, I'm using the terms "bill" and "resolution" interchangeably. This is a resolution, just so folks in the viewing audience know. Councilmember Morales, did I see you begin to raise your hand?
No, I'll wait till we're, well, I'll just say I'm doing a lot of work on the Equitable Development Initiative, and I'll talk about that more later.
Okay, excellent. Are there any other comments on the underlying bill that folks want to highlight? Councilmember Herbold.
Are we just talking right now about comments?
As introduced, right, before we get into comments, so that folks know all of the work that you all did to make minor, actually significant improvements to the resolution text before we get into the discussion about amendments. So if you do have anything you'd like to highlight for the viewing public, please feel free.
Well, it's a question about the substitute, as opposed to, I think, what you were inviting was for people who contributed to the substitute to speak.
You can ask a question as well, please feel free to. Thank you.
Just trying to follow your directions. So I do have a question about the funding included for the Office of Housing. I understand that the Office of Housing doesn't currently have funding for program support and capacity building for organizations to pivot programming to acquisition and development. But we've heard from Puget Sound Sage advocating for these dollars to be allocated to EDI for that same purpose instead. And, you know, I recognize that the EDI program hasn't traditionally focused on the housing element of a project that might include housing. But in my experience, working on projects that anticipate both OH funding as well as EDI funding, part of the problem, I think, historically, for getting the OH funding is that the Office of Housing sometimes has a different vision for how to prioritize their housing dollars. It's a, I think it's a totally appropriate approach that is often focused on trying to maximize housing acquisition and development, whereas the EDI historically has really been focused on addressing the needs associated with addressing displacement. And so sometimes that involves projects that include housing, but maybe not the same large number of units of housing. And so I just have concerns about putting these dollars in OH rather than putting them in the EDI specifically for housing within EDI.
Tracy, I'm going to let you take that question, and Ali, as we do so, the black box is up again on the screen. If you can reload, that'd be great. Tracy, please go ahead.
Sure. So this potential funding for, I think we call it program support, the vision here would be that as some of those funds from the community fund are allocated to specific projects, that OH would also be able to make an allocation to the specific sponsors of the housing to shore up, to beef up their capacity to actually get that project to the finish line. And you are correct in that OH has not ever really had those resources before. We actually used to, years ago, we used to have organizational support funding that we provided to actually many nonprofit housing providers. We just would give it to these providers as they were building up their organizational capacity. That money went away long ago, but it's been recognized that the vision here would be that as some of those funds from the Community Fund are allocated to specific projects, that OH would also be able to make an allocation to the specific sponsors of the housing to shore up, to beef up their capacity to actually get that project to the finish line. And you are correct in that OH has not ever really had those resources before. We actually used to, years ago, we used to have organizational support, funding that we provided to actually many nonprofit housing providers. We just would give it to these providers as they were building up their organizational capacity. That money went away long ago, but it's been recognized that for, in particular, some of the newer housing development groups that are coming in, community-based ones, that some of that support, that kind of funding for that kind of support is really necessary. And so that's what the intent about this particular funding is. It would go along with any kind of funding allocation that's made to a housing project to the organization that's sponsoring it, to beef up their capacity organizationally and make sure that they can get those projects to the finish line.
And I'm sorry, what I'm trying to understand, though, is why can't this be done through the EDI?
I'm not as familiar with how EDI uses their capacity building. Funny, Ally, maybe you can speak to that?
Well, I can't, it's a policy choice to some extent. Historically, as you mentioned, and well, maybe historic isn't the right word, but in the years, the EDI has been a grant-making program at the city, has focused on the non-housing components of those projects. The funding specifically for the Equitable Development Initiative in this resolution says that it can be used both for the housing and non-housing component. You know, this particular fund is similar to, but it is focused on housing investment specifically. And I would just note that there is an amendment, it's amendment two to the resolution that tries to tie it more tightly, so there is coordination and consultation with the Equitable Development Initiative team in the Office of Planning and Community Development, as well as working with the advisory, the EDI advisory group to inform those investment areas, or investment decisions, excuse me. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, and looking forward to that discussion as well. And we'll be happy to highlight some of the conversations that we've had with community organizations like Puget Sound Sage, who asked for additional EDI participation in the funding process and project selection. So that's a really great sort of preview of the conversation to come. Okay, not seeing additional comments. Want to thank folks for all of their input on this draft resolution that we have in front of us. And I'm going to ask central staff to go one by one through the amendments. So with that, if you could please present on Amendment One, and it is one that I'm introducing, and then I'll speak to it. Thank you. So Amendment One, sponsored by Chair Mosqueta, would add a recital confirming the city's commitment to advocate and work with other public and private housing funders to modify the funding policies to support the development of housing with enhanced green building and labor standards. This recognizes the requirements included in this resolution that any new housing is meeting those labor standards and has enhanced green building, green building standards, but that if that increases the cost of development, it may make it difficult for those projects to compete for funding that could help leverage the city's investment. So this is a commitment that the city will continue to work with those funders to ensure that these projects will be competitive. Thank you very much, Ally. I move to amend Resolution 31957 as presented on Amendment One on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment One for consideration as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. Council colleagues, let me just give you a little bit of background here. I know this is just the beginning, and we're still in the "whereas" sections, but I just want to thank the folks from labor, from housing, and from the environmental justice groups who've reached out. We know the single most important thing that we can do to combat climate change is to invest in affordable housing near transit jobs and services, because as more people get displaced from the city, one of the biggest, actually the biggest emitters of carbon emission is commuting into the city. We are creating situations where people are having to commute hours in, and we're the third-largest city in the nation to have a mega commuter status, meaning that more and more workers and community members are getting pushed further and further out of the city. So we're really excited that this proposal in the underlying bill and the resolutions that we're talking, sorry, the language that we're talking about today emphasize funding for infrastructure, maintenance, retrofitting, energy efficiency updates for deep green, affordable housing. And in working with climate activists, labor activists, housing partners, we've now included language in here that can be really directed at trying to build additional affordable housing with green standards, using strong labor standards, and to move us to a fossil-free new world. We know when we include labor and green building standards together, the return on investment is much higher in terms of climate resilience and economic resilience for our workers. And this is a benefit that sometimes comes with added costs to building the actual housing. And we want to make sure that we are able to access and leverage all funding options to make sure that we can build projects, meet our green standard needs, and that as we build, the additional cost is not sort of used as a penalty against those housing developers for all of the good work that they're doing to include labor standards and green building standards. So this amendment acknowledges that the city has an opportunity to work with our public and private partners to align housing funding priorities to support these important benefits to our communities. And really excited about the partnership that we've had working with the building developers and the nonprofit building developers, labor advocates, and environmental justice advocates as we crafted this amendment here. Looking forward to your support, so we can create more high-performing buildings that are able to compete for financing and meet our housing and green standards. Any additional comments? Okay. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number One?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, council colleagues. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Could we please have central staff walk us through the next amendment, Amendment Number Two? Thank you. Amendment Two, sponsored by Chair Mosqueta, excuse me, I scrolled down too far on my own notes, would add language, this is the amendment I just described previously, that would add language related to the Equitable Development Initiative's role in the Community Fund that would fall under the Housing and Services Funding category to state the expectation that the Office of Housing will work with the Equitable Development Initiative staff team and seek input from the Permanent Equitable Development Initiative Advisory Committee in administering those phones, those funds, excuse me. And then within the Equitable Development category, it would add additional criteria within, for allocating those funds, to include prioritizing projects that are sponsored by organizations with diverse community representation on their boards. Excellent. Thank you very much. As sponsor of Amendment Two, I'd like to move to amend Resolution 31957 as presented on Amendment Two on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment Two as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. Council colleagues, I'll offer just a few comments on this. These amendments here are really intended to strengthen participation of Black, Indigenous, and people of color community members in the equitable development process by embedding the EDI advisory board in the project selection process, and ensuring that projects who apply for funding are also walking the walk with diverse board representation of BIPOC communities on their boards. I want to thank Puget Sound Sage for their work on this amendment with us and for drawing our attention to the details to help us strengthen the amendments and the elements of this plan, this amendment specifically being one of those efforts. Any additional comments on this? Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I do want to also thank the folks at Puget Sound Sage and South Core. We've been in a lot of conversations over the last several days about this fund in particular, and I do think it's important to acknowledge that this amendment makes it very clear that the intention is for some of these funds to be used in partnership between OH and the EDI team at the Office of Planning and Community Development, and that we expect the, that the, ah, sorry, I'm tired. I'm sure we're all retired. That EDI Advisory Board play an important part in this conversation and the decision-making about how these projects get allocated, how the funding for these projects get allocated. The advisory board itself is in an interim stage right now, so we are expecting that we will be able to seat a permanent advisory board soon so that we can make sure, especially as this bill passes and gets implemented, and we have substantially more money available for EDI, that the advisory board is in place and has had an opportunity to be working together so that as they start making those decisions, there is that familiarity with the process and with the kind of work that's happening. So I want to thank the chair for including this clarification in the bill and look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. As a huge proponent of EDI, I know we'll be talking about that later today as well, but I want to say thank you. And Councilmember Herbold, I just wanted to address also your question earlier, and for the viewing public, Amendment Two relates to the issue that you were raising earlier and is also supported and has been crafted with Sage, so thank you for flagging it. Any additional comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go ahead and ask, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number Two?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Let's go ahead and move on to the next amendment, Amendment Number Three. Thank you, Ally. Thank you. Amendment Number Three, sponsored by Chair Mosqueta and Councilmember Morales, is related to the proposed investments in the Green New Deal spending category. This would add language stating the expectation that those investments will be informed by the members of the to-be-established Green New Deal Oversight Board and other stakeholders representing communities harmed by the economic, racial, and environmental injustice, and workers who may be displaced by these spending plan investments. In addition, it adds language prioritizing funding areas, including transitioning single and multifamily housing from use of natural gas or electricity, and other strategies to improve energy efficiency in housing, investing in job training programs to equip workers to thrive in a green economy, as well as providing funding for outreach, education, and technical assistance to be provided by community-based organizations to support low-income, low-wage communities, people of color, and immigrant refugees, and limited English proficiency communities, and provides funding to support the implementation of the Green New Deal Oversight Board, including staffing costs and board member compensation. Thank you very much. Let's get this amendment in front of us. I move to amend Resolution 31957 as presented in Amendment Three on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment Three as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. I, along with Councilmember Morales, are sponsors of this amendment. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Morales first, if you'd like to speak to this, and then I'll happily follow you.
Sure, I'll be brief. I just want to acknowledge that part of the importance about this is really pushing to actually seat the Green New Deal Oversight Board to make sure that we get the OSCE staff person on who was supposed to support that board. If we're going to be moving on our climate goals in the city and follow through with the Green New Deal Resolution, then we need to get this board seated. These are intended to be members of the community, folks representing Black and Brown communities, so that we hear directly from them about what economic justice and climate justice looks like, and for their leadership to be included as we're having conversations about what the investment priorities should be related to how we reach our climate goals. So I look forward to supporting this. I want to thank Chair Mosqueta for the language and all of the work around making sure that workers and how we think about implementing particularly green building practices in our housing strategies is included, and how we make sure that workers are part of that just transition as well are all important factors here, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Colleagues, I'm really excited about the language that we have here. I think it's a great complement to the language that's included in the underlying resolution for your consideration. This lifts up and enhances the Green New Deal elements. But this proposal here, the amendment in Amendment Three, was really driven by a broad coalition of labor, environmental justice groups, community-based organizations focused on equity. They all came together with priorities that they had originally, you know, thought about together as a sort of a blue-green equity table. And they brought us some priorities, spending priorities, to invest in retrofits and weatherization, to help low-income homeowners who are hardest hit by climate change and transitions in their communities, to make sure that we can transition to greener energy efficiency, like away from oil and gas, and make the necessary retrofits for electricity bills to remain affordable. The amendment in front of us recognizes that the role of the Green New Deal Oversight Committee in making recommendations is critical, and that funding has been stalled on this in addition to appointments. So we are lifting up the Green New Deal Oversight Board by ensuring that there's funding so the group can get stood up. And they want, the advocates really wanted to make sure that we were protecting and lifting up the role of the Green New Deal Oversight Board, but that we also continued the work while that board was being stood up to make sure that it had adequate staffing and momentum so that it can be successful. So in that spirit, the proposed amendment here also funds the staffing and compensation for the Green New Deal Oversight Board members to make sure that it's permanent, that it provides funding for the body to make sure that there are things like childcare and transit options. The proposal includes a strong language around outreach and partnership with community-based organizations who serve communities most impacted by climate change, especially BIPOC communities. It contains worker retraining dollars to ensure a just transition for workers to thrive in the green new economy, and includes training programs that are focused on creating pathways to good jobs, including for local Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities. So just a quick thank you, so you all know who was really integral in helping to come up with this amendment. I understand that there was 33 different organizations involved. I'll just highlight a few. Thanks, MLK Labor, Puget Sound Sage, 350 Seattle, MASTA, TALKS, Transit Riders Union, Housing Development Estancia, El Centro de la Raza, Front and Centered, and many more. Would love to have all of your support on this, as I think it complements much of the work that this council has already done in the past, and make sure that we can move forward with some of those commitments with secure funding. Council colleagues, additional comments? Councilmember Sawant, please. I know this was a big part of what you've also been raising over the last few months. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I, of course, will be supporting this amendment as you just alluded to. Councilmember Mosqueta, it originated from the concepts incorporated into the Amazon tax legislation that the grassroots tax Amazon movement fought for, and the language that was arrived at through the democratically organized action conferences that organizations like 350, and also the urban Native activist community through Mazazca Talks was involved in. And in the beginning of the year, when we, when our movement had our first Tax Amazon Action Conference at Washington Hall, attended by hundreds, it was at that very meeting that activists brought up the need specifically to fund transition of homes from heating oil and fracked gas to clean energy, as home heating pollution accounts for 15% of the city's pollution output. And I'm really glad to see that the movement demand is being, you know, that it's being amplified in this amendment, along with the emphasis on just transition for all affected workers, and standing in solidarity with the labor movement, and the emphasis on prioritizing Green New Deal work in communities of color and all marginalized communities, including immigrant, refugee, and limited English proficiency communities. I would also note that this is for 2022 funding onwards. So as far as the question of getting the dollars to staff the Green New Deal Oversight Board, that is absolutely important, you know, in addition to this amendment. For the next 18 months, the Green New Deal Oversight Board needs to be funded, and I really hope that the council members who vote yes on this amendment will also support the amendment, budget amendment that's coming from my office to fund the Green New Deal Oversight Board right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Any additional comments on this? Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Any additional comments on this item? Seeing and hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the record, call the roll on Amendment Number Three?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Thanks, Council colleagues. Central staff, let's go ahead and walk through the next amendment.
Amendment Four, sponsored by Chair Mosqueta, would modify the details under the Economic Revitalization spending category to be more specific about the proposed investments in businesses, workforce development, and business districts, to include, for example, programs that retrain workers who are transitioning to a new profession, identifies criteria to be considered for prioritizing these investments, specifies that this funding can be used for outreach and education to ensure that businesses understand what the criteria is and can be competitive in the application process, and connects these investments with related strategies under the Green New Deal spending category. It also corrects Attachment One labeling this investment category as economic revitalization.
Thank you very much. I would like to move to amend Resolution 31957 as presented on Amendment Four on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Amendment One as presented on the agenda and described by central staff. As the sponsor of this amendment, I'll speak briefly to this. Really, Council colleagues, this is a collaborative effort as well to try to provide clarification on what we mean when we talk about economic revitalization. This is really about emphasizing what this pot of money was intended to do, to ensure that we have equity. Equity and economic recovery that centers our recovery on the values that I know we share, prioritizing small businesses, especially women and minority-owned businesses, ensuring workers have a just transition, whether that's a just transition to green new jobs, or just transition in a post-COVID world if they are seeking new employment because of the changes in local economy. It's about centering Green New Deal principles and ensuring equity values, including investments in BIPOC, LGBTQIA, and other historically marginalized communities. The economic revitalization bucket is focused on two main items. First, on workers who are displaced from their jobs due to crises, environmental, emerging needs, COVIDs, and others, so that they have the opportunity to engage in a just transition, including training and maintaining pay and benefit standards. Second, it's about ensuring small business support, in particular prioritizing small businesses and nonprofits who have strong labor standards, businesses from marginalized communities, and those who've experienced hardship due to COVID, and those that have models that support goals to eliminate climate pollution. And I think that that is in line with many of the amendments we've already talked about today, and will talk about it, because we know that we want to move forward, not in just creating survival from this crisis, but in creating a new thriving local and more equitable economy on the horizon. So I really appreciate all of the feedback that went into this, from businesses, from labor, from environmental justice groups, from immigrant rights groups, as we talked about what it actually means to have economic revitalization in this bucket. I thought this clarification would be very helpful. Any additional comments or questions on this amendment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number Four?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council colleagues, we are doing well on time. I might ask for your flexibility. If we can continue to get through this, that would be great. Madam Ali Panucci, would you please go on to the next amendment?
Absolutely. Thank you. Amendment Five, sponsored by Councilmember Juarez, would add language expressing the council's intent that investments are equitably distributed to provide support and services to low-wage working people, families, and individuals, homeless individuals and families, Black, Indigenous, people of color, and other historically marginalized communities living and working in neighborhoods across Seattle.
Okay, thank you so very much. We have Amendment Number Five in front of us, which is sponsored by Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Juarez, I will turn it over to you if you'd like to move Amendment Five.
Thank you. I'm moving to amend Resolution 31957 as presented on Amendment Five on the agenda titled Equitable Distribution of Funds. I believe you all have the amendment in front of you.
Second.
Essentially, pardon me?
I said second. I'll just move and second it. It's been moved and seconded. It's in front of us. Councilmember Juarez, please continue.
I'm sorry. I didn't see the script that says pause.
You're great. Thank you.
It's also Attachment J in the packet of the 56-page memo. So I'm pleased to offer this attached amendment, Number Five, Attachment J. The city council is striving to ensure funding is available to assist low-income families and individuals, immigrants, and BIPOC communities, that is, Black, Indigenous, people of color who have been historically marginalized in our society, but also in our budget process. This amendment helps ensure equity for low-income individuals and families and BIPOC, to ensure that they have access to funds regardless of where they live in the city. I would like to reference a data source, and actually, I have a few data sources, but I want to focus particularly on this one. Those colleagues we've seen before, we've made other decisions, including upzoning, et cetera. It handles racial and social equity index, which combines information on race, ethnicity, and related demographics with data on socioeconomic and health disadvantages. The index identifies priority populations that make up relatively large portions of neighborhood residents, and shows people in need living in identifiable neighborhoods throughout the city, which is not always commonly recognized. If you remember back when we were doing our upzoning over a year ago, those are the places of displacement, of low opportunity, high risk, and those are the factors that we were looking at through, I believe, Department of Neighbors and OPCD. For example, there are several such high need populations, particularly along the Aurora Corridor, the Lake City Way Corridor, the neighborhood of Little Brook, Northgate, and Bitter Lake, where low-income families, individuals, immigrants do not have access to the same level of shelter and human services as other areas. I'd like to add that up in District Five particularly, certainly in the North End, we have a higher level now of North African immigrants, of a growing Latinx population, and we also have our Literacy Source, which teaches English as a first, second language, where I believe in the North End, we are now up to about 80 languages that are spoken in the North End alone. So with that, colleagues, I would ask for your support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Juarez. I'm enthusiastically in support of this amendment as well. Thank you for introducing it and walking us through it. Council colleagues, are there additional comments or questions on Amendment Five? Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you so much, Chair Mosqueta, and special thanks to Councilmember Juarez as well for this particular amendment. I do also plan to support this amendment, and as a citywide council member, just wanted to appreciate again the intent behind this language. And, you know, certainly, we are seeing parts of our town, city, that are disproportionately impacted in the ways described here. But we also have to recognize that with ongoing displacement and gentrification threats existing in our city, that that is true for all parts of our city, and really do appreciate the sponsor's intent here to make sure that we don't forget about communities across the city who are facing equal and deepening displacement and gentrification threats. So thank you. Really excited about supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Were there additional comments from Phelps? Okay, I am not seeing any. Very, very excited about this amendment. Thanks again, Councilmember Juarez. Any closing comments from you?
Yes, just briefly. Thank you, President Gonzalez. I know that we, when we, a couple years ago, we both spoke and attended the Literacy Source graduation. But just for some historical perspective here, this goes in the time machine here, when we were all looking at Hala and reading the report and the 70 recommendations, and looking at the footnotes and the red-lighting maps of what happened throughout this whole city, and that we still have those pockets, and we still have that threat in the North End, of course, everywhere else, but particularly the areas that I'm talking about of displacement. We can't forget that up in the North End, and particularly in my district, 51% of our population are renters, and we have the highest level of elders. So we are looking at particular vulnerable populations, and so I just want to make sure that we are not overlooking these groups that are going to need access to and would like the benefits of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Juarez. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Amendment Number Five?
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Strauss.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Madam Ali Panucci, and central staff, thank you so much for walking us through this. The motion does carry, and the amendment is adopted. Why don't you go ahead and introduce for us Amendment Number Six?
Thank you. Amendment Number Six, sponsored by Council President Gonzalez, Councilmember Herbold, and Councilmember Morales, requests that the executive within the Housing and Services category, when they come back with the implementation plan in June of 2021, considers developing a new rental assistance program in conjunction with developing, excuse me, conjunction with developing the implementation plan, and allows for the program to be funded with proceeds from the payroll tax under the Housing and Services spending category. This morning, Councilmember Herbold's staff distributed a revised version of this amendment to council members, and I'm just going to put up on the screen here, maybe zoom out slightly, a track changes version that shows you what is different between the amendment that was in the memo distributed last night and posted to the agenda, and the alternative version that I believe is what the sponsors want to consider today.
Wonderful. So thank you very much, Councilmember Gonzalez. This is your amendment. Would you like to move the amendment?
I would. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I move to amend Resolution 31957 as presented on Amendment Six A, recently distributed.
Second.
Wonderful. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Gonzalez, as a prime sponsor of this amendment, would you like to speak to it?
Absolutely, and would invite my cosponsors to chime in if they wish as well. We know that there will be an ongoing need for rental assistance, particularly because we don't know how long it will take for individuals and households to recover from the COVID-19-related economic crisis. Just yesterday, we heard Governor Inslee announce a pause on any county advancing further in our phased restart, and this will inevitably have continued and ongoing impacts in who will be able to return to work. We're also headed towards an eviction crisis, despite our efforts to put protections and flexibility in place and get rental assistance to those in need across both the county, and those are efforts that have been attempted to be executed by both the city, the county, and the state. So the reality is, is that we simply need more rental assistance, and should reform unprecedented partnerships in order to collaborate on providing ongoing resources to tenants across the city. So I hope that this amendment will allow us the opportunity to deliberately and proactively create strategies that will help us preserve the quality of older housing units and help us figure out how to work with small landlords who want to continue to partner with the city in keeping Seattleites housed. I want to thank Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Morales for their sponsorship of this particular amendment. The language that you see before us in Amendment Six A does not take away from the intent and the desire of the underlying Amendment Six. It is friendly amendments that just sort of make, I think, the intent much crisper and clearer, so that as we continue to do this work in the coming weeks, we are all on the same page in terms of what we are trying to accomplish here. But really proud to be able to advance this in an effort to, again, try to identify how we can bolster our work around rental assistance in a way that recognizes that this is a dire, dire need for renters, but also will require our housing providers, i.e. our smallest landlords, to continue to work with us in providing safe and affordable housing for those who need it the most. So thank you, Chair Mosqueta, and I want to encourage my colleagues to support this amendment.
Thank you very much. Are there additional comments on this Amendment Six A? Welcome, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I just want to speak very briefly to the changes between what we had originally proposed and what we have before us now. These are very modest changes, consistent with the long-term goals of helping those most in need, preserving long-term tenancies, preventing evictions, and preserving affordable housing, while also examining the role of small landlords in providing safe, affordable housing. We heard from our friends in the housing, affordable housing and advocacy, and homelessness advocacy community about the earlier version of the amendment as drafted. And so we are recognizing with this updated version that it's so important that rent assistance take the correct form, so that in the long term, it's not becoming, you know, a public subsidy propping up an unaffordable rental market. So, you know, we support taking actions to level the playing field for renters in an out-of-reach market. We consistently hear from small mom-and-pop landlords concerned about losing their often naturally affordable rental property that they're counting on to rely on it for retirement or other income. The changes to the amendment tries to, again, thread the needle among these concerns, while avoiding the unintended consequence of subsidizing unaffordable rental housing. Just want to thank my cosponsors for their willingness to consider these revisions, and thank friends at the Washington Low-Income Housing Alliance for their thoughtful input, and their ongoing and steadfast advocacy for increased rental assistance at the federal level. It is greatly needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Sawant, thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Sawant, and then, I believe, Councilmember Morales. Did you have your hand up? No. Okay, Councilmember Sawant, please go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I will be supporting this amendment, but I also want to make it very clear to members of the public that are watching that we want to preserve affordable housing, and we want to make sure that the burden does not land on renters first and foremost, but also that the interests of very small landlords, who are also, many of whom are struggling, are tied with the interests of renters, and that we want to make sure that this does not turn into any kind of public subsidy for corporate landlords. And we want to actually kick out profiteering landlords, and we want to make sure that in addition to supporting renters themselves and ensuring that small landlords don't bear the brunt of the crisis, we also need rent control and a major expansion of publicly-owned affordable housing, which is why the upcoming amendment for the affordable homes in the Central District and in other parts of the city is very important. And also, it's important that the council pass the Amazon tax in the first place, because a combination of rent control and an expansion of publicly-owned because a combination of rent control and an expansion of publicly-owned permanently affordable housing will have a big impact on what the rents are, even in privately or corporate-owned homes as well, because that's what economics shows, that it has, is an effect, just, just like the rise in, the minimum wage has an impact on wages across the board. You, you will see the similar effect just on the other end on rents as well. So we do need a real fight for citywide policies like rent control without corporate loopholes and also making sure that rental assistance does not unwittingly or unintentionally end up benefiting corporate landlords.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Swant. Any additional comments on this? Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. So I just want to let folks know, our office has received calls from folks already saying that they are being threatened with eviction. And in fact, one constituent moved because they were being told that their property was going to be redeveloped and they had to get out quickly. And so, so we've already seen what is, what could be happening, what's coming. And we know that across the city and even our country, we are staring down an avalanche of evictions. As soon as the state's moratorium is lifted, we will see eviction notices go out. Courts will be overwhelmed, and rental assistance, such as it is, is going to run out fast. So without this, this kind of ongoing rental assistance that we are hoping to, to develop, families will lose their homes, small landlords will face issues paying their mortgages. So, you know, this is, this is a solution to that challenge. And I just want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez for bringing the amendment and, and Councilmember Herbold as well. And I just want to close by saying that we know the best solution to avoiding the crushing debt will be to cancel rent and mortgage payments overall for struggling renters and for landlords, and that's still something that we all should be advocating for.
Agreed. I'm looking for any additional comments. Seeing no additional comments, I'll also offer my support for this amendment. I know that we all are interested in working through every avenue we can to ensure that Seattle residents can afford housing and long-term housing. And one of the best strategies is to invest in building, operating, publicly-financed rents, restricted housing, and maintaining affordability, like we're doing in this amendment for residents so that they can be able to stay in their homes for decades. We know that advocates, along with the city, have been pushing for the passage of a hundred billion in proposed federal COVID-19 rent assistance proposed by Representative Heck and other members of Congress, and underscoring what we've heard from housing and homelessness advocates. The revenue proposal in front of us affords us with an unprecedented opportunity to focus on the creation of deeply affordable housing, invest in subsidized rental homes, creating lasting affordable housing inventory, as well as supporting those who are currently in our city who need additional support as they weather this storm, that is COVID. So looking forward to supporting this as one key component to creating more affordable housing throughout the city. Okay, seeing no additional comments? Please, let's go ahead, Madam Clerk, and call the roll on amendment six-A.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swant?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you very much, Council colleagues. The motion carries and the amendment is adopted. At this point, I'm going to hit pause so that we can all grab a little bit to eat. I saw cheering, thank you. I know that we're very close, so I am anticipating that we will get through this relatively quickly when we re-adjourn, but I will pull us back together at 2:05 for the attempt to do roll call and will get us back into this process. Again, if there's no objection, the committee will recess until 2:05 PM. There are no objections. The meeting is in recess until 2:05 PM. Appreciate you all, thank you.